Alright guys, I guess we'll get this meeting started. It's two o'clock. I see Ms. Hanning, you're able to join us. Good. And we've got Keith and John here with myself and Ms. Alright, Ms. Curran, I guess this is kind of just a training for for us, maybe on some stuff you put together for us. So I'm gonna give the floor to you and you just do what you think that is necessary for us.
Okay, I am going to see if I can share my screen with all of you. Or if David will make me a co-host, I will share my screen with all of you. Thanks. Let's see. Oops, I just shared the wrong screen with you, I think. Hold on. Let's try that one.
You're not gonna make us do exercises, are you?
No, no, thankfully not. Alright, can you guys see my screen?
We sure can.
Alright, so we are gonna do this planning and zoning training today. Well, maybe if it'll let me click through here. Just as general overview will run through authorities, duties and obligations as a board member, ethical behavior, parliamentary procedure, conflicts of interest, immunity, and then generally the Open Meetings Act and Public Records Act. So to begin with, the roles and responsibilities of the board are both legal and ethical. Your authority is through statute and case law and also through the rules, regulations and bylaws that have been established within the county. The major parts of the statutory authority that operate for planning and zoning are listed generally here. 98301 gives local land use planning authority to the county. And then the eight section or Title 18, 201, 203, or 201, 301, 401 and 501 are the sections where most of what you guys do is contained. And then also 3412103 talks some about the contents of the plat. So as we've discussed previously, there were some statutory authority changes with this 2021 year that affected planning and zoning to 185303. They have moved the time that the land has to be held in a family subdivision back to the 10 years. It used to be 10, and then I think in 2019, David can correct me if I'm wrong, they changed it to five years. And now they're moving it back to 10 years again. I don't know why, but that is what they have done. So anybody who's applying for a family subdivision has to have owned that for more than 10 years at this point. 185306 was also a relatively minor change. It talks about subdivision road easements and previously they had to be not less than 20 feet in width. They added a provision that allows you guys to accept easements that are smaller than 20 feet in width. If the subdivider demonstrates to your satisfaction that the easement is adequate to protect the health, safety and welfare and provide adequate access to the facilities. The big changes for this year, at least in a statutory sense, were in 98301 and 185201. And the bulk of these changes, or the entirety of these changes actually, was the codification of the case law that says that land use plans cannot be the basis for denial of a permit if that permit meets all of the zoning regulations. And we'll go through that a little more as we go through all of this. That has essentially been what the law has been for years. But it was all in case law. And after the Asphalt Specialties case decision came out this spring, legislature codified that law. And it affects, the changes that they implemented were in this 98301, 85201, and then also the corresponding municipal governance section, which is 151602. So right here is the text of the bulk of what was added to 98301. They entirely added the section E and section F. And what this says is, we'll just read it really quickly and run through it, is "Local land use plans may guide local governments in adopting or amending local zoning regulations. However, such plans shall not be construed as a substitute for or equivalent to duly acted zoning regulations which have the force and effect of law. Local land use plans shall be implemented in accordance with the following. In the event of conflict between a duly enacted local zoning regulation and a local land use plan, the local zoning regulation controls. No local government shall require that a land use or physical development be consistent with a local land use plan unless the applicable provisions of the local land use plan have been incorporated into the zoning regulations." And then in F, "Nothing in this article shall allow any local government to use a local land use plan as authority to deny or restrict a permissible land use or, excuse me, or physical development which is not restricted or prohibited under existing zoning regulations." So where this comes into effect for all of you in planning and zoning is when there are issues that are brought up about conflicts between the cap and what's allowed in the zoning regulations. Consideration can be given to what's in the cap. But unless what the applicant is asking for is specifically limited by the zoning regulations, we cannot deny a permit application based on the fact that it doesn't comply with the language of the cap.
So what does consideration mean?
So, so you can look at it and say, you know, it is consistent, or here's there are cases often where we, there's conflict between the city's cap and what the county has. So it can be part of your discussion. But unless there's something in the zoning resolution, then we can't deny just because what the applicant has asked for doesn't comply with the cap. Which is a roundabout answer and not really an answer all at the same time.
Sorry, but maybe on the "not really," I mean, to say you could consider it, but you can't decide anything based on it seems a bit to... I mean, yeah, you can talk about any darn thing, but the moral of the story is who cares what it says? You can only approve or deny based on the written regulation, if I'm understanding you correctly.
That is correct. And then what the, so the purpose of the cap, in my understanding, and David chime in here if you, if I'm misstating or missing things. The purpose of the cap is to guide the zoning regulations. So, yes?
I apologize. I don't mean to interrupt you. You keep referring to cap. Are you, do you mean the plan?
Yes, that's what I meant.
Saying, no, because we're talking about two separate things, talking comprehensive plan and rules and regulations of the county. So I just wanted to clarify that.
That, you're right. Thank you for that clarification, and that is true. I was looking at Aqua for Things earlier today and was stuck. So Albany County's comprehensive plan is what we're talking about here. So, so Burn, to answer your question, if there are things in the comprehensive plan that the county believes are necessary to be part of the zoning resolutions, those pieces of the comprehensive plan have to be incorporated into the zoning resolution. So that requires the amendment of the resolution and public hearing and all of those things, which is possible. And we can certainly do that, but that is how you implement the pieces of the comprehensive plan into the zoning resolution.
That makes good sense. And maybe Sean, I assume this is just kind of a wide open discussion. Would you prefer that we address ourselves through the chair? I mean, Jennifer, are you okay with interruptions? I don't mean to do a lot of that, but what's the, am I right? The format of this meeting is, let's just have a little talk here.
So what, how I'd like this meeting to go is Jennifer has the floor. Jennifer's, it's her presentation for us. And I think that by you asking questions is good. Maura, John, anybody. Let's just give each other the respect of letting somebody finish their thought and a question for Ms. Curran. And I think we'll get a lot done. So you're just fine, Burn, and we'll just continue on.
Okay, thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions about this section before we move on?
But just, just to clarify Sean's question, when, when we say comprehensive plan, am I correct to understand that, say, the cost, the cast rock protection plan is a part of the comprehensive plan?
That's correct, with the extent that it hasn't been incorporated into the section of the zoning resolutions that specifically addresses the APOZ.
Right, but the, when we say comp plan, and it's sure at city level, county level, it has lots of pieces, one of which is a volume that said county comprehensive plan, but there's another volume that says cast rock protection plan, which, which is also at that same level of, it's a comp plan, it's not regulation. That's the point. Is that correct?
Correct. Those are land use plans and they're not, unless they're incorporated into the actual zoning resolution, they don't control as law.
Got it. Thank you.
Jennifer, Mr. Speaker has a question for you.
Okay.
Yes, Jennifer, could you just reiterate on that one statement about even though one part of the applicant has something, we cannot deny him something. I didn't quite understand that. Could you reiterate on that, please?
I will do that. It is actually on one of the next slides. So we'll get to that one because I have the text of that slide up so you can see all of it and we'll talk about that a little more in depth as well. Is that alright?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Maura, did you have a question as well?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Jennifer. So I guess one question I have is, does this same interpretation apply to zoning changes? So far, we've been talking about land, you know, permitted land uses and what you can do on your property. And I'm wondering, because the zoning resolution makes reference to the comprehensive plan as a guide for our approval of a zoning change, is, is it in a way incorporated by reference that way? Like, is it actually already a part of our zoning resolution?
The answer to that, I believe, is not. There's a case that is referenced later, and I think it's the Ford case or the case just after Ford, where the, the implementation was, or the reference to the comprehensive plan or the zoning plans was only effective because they codified it into the zoning resolutions.
So, okay, so there's no way to, to take a shortcut to, to incorporate it in. It'll be a heavy lift to get all of the pieces incorporated into the zoning resolution to make it legally binding.
Correct. It would take, it would take modification or suggested amendments to the zoning resolution to incorporate anything that we wanted to add or change from what's already in the existing zoning resolutions, but it is something that can be done.
So, so Jennifer? Yeah, pardon me for jumping ahead, but Mara's question is, is very specifically addressed by an earlier discussion we'd had. In our county zoning regulation, it requires us to make a affirmative finding that the zoning change generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, that's a quote. So your, your legal interpretation is that that phrase in existing zoning regulations is, is moot or inapplicable or illegal or something?
I would say yes. I think that is a part of our zoning resolution that needs to be amended, especially given this change in the statutes.
Okay.
Alright. So this next section addresses the 185202B and C. And that is where with the creation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was done in Albany County in, I think, 1975, that gives the Planning and Zoning Commission the ability to prepare and amend the comprehensive plan, including zoning, promoting the public health, safety, morals and general welfare of the unincorporated areas of the county. And then the second part of that is the resolutions. So that's where Planning and Zoning Commission prepares recommendations to effectuate the planning and zoning purposes and certify its recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So to participate in or create the comprehensive plan. And then the second part of that is to prepare the zoning resolutions to effectuate that plan and certify your recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, who then go through their whole process to vote on it and publish it and do all the same things that they've always had to do. This next section is 185203, and this isn't quoted in its entirety. I told you wrong, Mr. Spiegelberg. But part of 185203 requires prompt action on any application that is filed. And it specifically says that when the zoning application complies with the requirements of the zoning resolution, it shall be granted. If, if it is to be denied, then the reasons for the denial have to be specified. So with that clarification, let me check with Mr. Spiegelberg first, just because he initially had the question to see if that answered your question or if I can answer something else for you.
Yes, that clarifies it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Hinkley?
Yes, there's many threads to this, and of course, we all admit statutes aren't entirely consistent. Maybe something got rescinded. Another place this came up was in the city's comments on two recent subdivisions where they, I don't think they gave us the reference, but they quoted from statute, they said, "Counties are required per county plating and subdivision regulations in Wyoming state statutes to the extent practical to ensure any plat is consistent with any city and county plan," close quote. Were they off base? Has that been rescinded or are you familiar with what they're even talking about?
So that section that they're talking about is in 3412103B. And that section as a whole is, I'll read it to you. I don't think I have it in here. It says, "If a city or town approval is not required under this section and the plat is located within one mile of the boundaries of a city or a town, the Board of County Commissioners upon receipt of a plat application shall solicit comments from the governing body of the city or town related to impacts on the city or town's infrastructure or other development plans resulting from the proposed plat and development. The Board shall consider the city or town's comments that are received by the Board at least 20 days, business days prior to the scheduled final consideration of the plat proposal, and shall respond in writing to the town about any items of disagreement. To the extent practical, the Board of County Commissioners shall ensure that a plat application meets the following, and one of those is that it's consistent with any applicable city and county land use or comprehensive plans." So it is still in there, however, with the change in the law and the language that specifically modifies it be, to be to the extent practical. I think that to the, they can, like we talked about before, it absolutely can be considered, but it should not be the basis for denial, because then I think we get into the conflict of laws with these changed laws that are specifically in the 185203 and these new changes to the 98301.
So like, like our own zoning regulation that talks about an affirmative finding, those are, I don't know what the right legal term would be, moot or, or stricken out, or I hope the right term is, but even though it says that, it's not. You can't do that.
Well, and so approval or city or town isn't required within the one mile anymore. That's the donut where it used to require the city's approval, so it's not required. And so that, it, this section in the 3412103 should have been amended, probably when they were amending the 98 and all of it, but they didn't. However, with the qualifying language that, to the extent practical, they can certainly list, you know, here's where it meets it, here's where it doesn't meet it. But if it doesn't, because that's the one, the consistent with the, any applicable city and county land use or comprehensive plan. There are other things that have to be met in there. Conforms to any adopted street plan of the city, contains all areas for streets that are dedicated rights of way. My fan is blowing my papers. Contains dedicated easements for all existing and proposed utilities and contains additional criteria that they, that the Board of County Commissioners agree to through a jointly adopted plan or voluntary agreement, which we don't have with the city right now. So that one's inapplicable.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So ideally, you'd clean all that stuff up and all these collateral regulations to, to make them consistent with the notion that comprehensive plans don't regulate. That's the
Ideally, ideally, yes. As you're aware, you know, statutes are never ideal in any case, I don't think. Despite best efforts, they never quite get there. So
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mayor, I apologize. Mr. Kendy has a question for you.
Well, and, and it comes by more as a way of comment. That language, to the extent practical, I was there when they, they put that in, and that was essentially a sop to the Association of Municipalities from the County Commissioners that it would be considered, that the city's input would be considered, but that they no longer had the veto power that they previously did in a donut. And, and then with that other change, my own feeling is that the language, to the extent practical, means it's contrary to other parts of law, so it's essentially of no effect.
I agree. I, I think for the most part, I think they can, where it's to no effect where it talks about the county land use or comprehensive plans.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And sorry, I missed the hand up part, Mr. Moore.
Oh, that's okay. And I think, and this is more of, I guess, this is a comment. I guess the way I view that is, and looking from kind of a case study, the one that we did in the past was the Mountain West Estates, which was located on the south westerly portion of Sherman Hills. And that was actually before House Bill 85 went through, so all review of plats within one mile of the city had, you know, had cities, had to get their okay on it. But I think to the extent practical, I think one thing that we, we as planning commission members, but mostly it'd be David because he's the one who is our county planner. But it's for the city's infrastructure and connecting roads, I think, are the, the most important part of any time a plaque goes in front of, is within that half mile radius of the city. In those comments, I think it's important that we're mindful of that because, you know, a lot of areas around town that are currently in the city of Laramie weren't at one time. And any plats that we approve, you know, for the city to be able to connect, you know, infrastructure is expensive to put in, and, and also roads. I mean, we look at West Laramie and when the city annexed West Laramie and, and putting all the infrastructure in, and we still have roads over there that are still dirt. I think that that's just what, you know, David probably, you know, looks at, but also us as a, as a group looking at those types of improvements are important, especially when they're within that half mile radius of the city. Anyways, just a comment, and that just, you know, kind of comes from that Mountain West Estates plaque that, on the edge of town. So anyways, keep going.
No, agreed. Mr. Kendy, I appreciate your history with regard to the legislation of it. It's always nice to know what was going on on the legislative end before things got adopted. And I agree, Mr. Moore, I think that's why they left part of that language in there was so that there can be, to the extent practical, some thoughtful planning with regard to that city-county area of transition. So rules, regulations and bylaws. You have the rules and regulations of the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission, which, as I mentioned, where they also incorporate the bylaws. It was adopted on October 8th of 1975. They probably need to be updated to reflect some changes that have happened. Most notably that they require that the county clerk takes the meeting minutes. However, there was a statutory change that allowed that to be a designee. So now that's David and Joseph who have to take the meeting minutes of these meetings. The Albany County zoning resolution, the Albany County plating and subdivision regulations, and then the design and construction standards for small wastewater facilities and regulations for permit to construct, install or modify small wastewater facilities.
I had a question on the Yeah, sure. Okay. When I first got on the commission, which is two, three months ago, David sent out a kind of a package of things. And I think what you're calling the bylaws was labeled the rules of the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes.
It was signed by the, by the Chair of the Wyoming County Commission Association or something. It was unclear to me what I was seeing there. Was that, is that state statute? Is that an internal document to Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission, but to tell, what is that thing and who wrote it and who can change it?
So it is, it is like rules in all the rules that are generated through all things county. It is the rules and regulations of the, the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was signed by the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. And then it requires that when the Planning and Zoning Commission was created, that it was sent to the Secretary of State for filing so that they would be aware of that, that each county had created the Planning and Zoning Commission and what authority they have delegated to that commission.
Okay, so that was a document by the Albany County Commission, and they are the ones who would change it.
Yes, so I think proposed changes to it, now that the, that you, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been created, I think proposed changes to it would work like any other changes. They would start at planning and zoning and go out for public comment, and then you would certify your recommended changes to the Board of Commissioners, who would then do enact their process where they send it out for public comment and then ultimately approve or deny the requested changes or modify them.
Just as a zoning regulation, say, it stands at that level of
Yes.
And, and it is subject to then some framework established by state statute.
Yeah, it has to follow the public rulemaking statutes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And other than those rules and regulations from 1975, all the rest of these documents are available on the county's website under the planning section. David has them all up there, should you need them. I have most of them printed out in a giant binder that lives on my desk. This is just an overview of some of the case law and planning and zoning that we see a lot of being referenced in cases. Schuler versus Board of Commissioners from 1977 is the case that defined that moratorium process and how that has to work. And that has to essentially come from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Board of County Commissioners. The Krauthamel case was an Albany County case, and that case was overturned. Albany County was overturned at the Supreme Court level because they didn't explicitly follow that moratorium process that was laid out in Schuler. The, in that case, it was the planning director that recommended the continuation of a moratorium, and it didn't come from the Planning and Zoning Board. So the court said it was inappropriate and they overturned the extension of a moratorium. Ford versus County Commissioners of Converse County was one of the first cases that held that the comprehensive land use plan is merely policy while the zoning resolution has the force and effect of law. So, you know, as we move slowly through the legal process in Wyoming, one of the first cases that held that was in 1996, and it's still upheld repeatedly in other cases since then, but it took until 2001 that we actually, 21 that we actually got it into statute. And then laughter is the case I was talking about earlier where they, the Supreme Court found that the county met the dictates of Ford because they engrafted the plan's enforcement tool, the conditional use permit process into the zoning resolution. So the piece of the, the piece of the zoning or the comprehensive plan that Sweetwater County wanted to use and enforce, they codified that into resolution. Or the comprehensive plan that Sweetwater County wanted to use and enforce, they codified that into resolution. So the court there said, you've met what we said you had to do in Florida and it is enforceable and upholdable. And then this most recent case is the Asphalt Specialties case, which just came out at the beginning of this year. And it was a little different. Um, Laramie County had sections of the county that were entirely unzoned. And we don't have that in Albany County, but the, the gist of it is the same. That restriction can only be implied through zoning. And there was a quote in there that I think is relevant because it's oftentimes the hardest part when we're dealing with. Public hearings and things like that. And it says, absent zoning, the commission cannot substitute public disapproval for, for legal authority. To deny AC or ASCI, its proposed project. And that goes back again to the eighteen five, three oh three or two oh three. Where it says if you meet the requirements, you have to approve it. So then, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, most of us know the law, uh, if not from watching television from just anecdotes. That, that first one on your last slide, the moratorium was quite contentious procedurally. Um, uh, for the total weight business. So that's the case that. Ms. Trent was referring to when she insisted that. The county commission could not extend the moratorium without the approval of Planning and Zoning Commission. Am I, or? Making my way through that correctly?
Yep, that is correct. And. Um. I think it was Krauthamel, I can look for sure and tell you. There are, the court has placed limits on moratoriums. They can't be in existence in perpetuity. They require. You can put them in place to allow counties, especially they were used. Um. When Krauthamel started was they started that moratorium process because they were amending regulations and putting regulations into place. That had not been in place. So the Supreme Court said those are. A vehicle by which counties can restrict development for a short period of time to put regulations into place. Um, but they cannot be extended indefinitely. And they have to, when you're extending it, it has to follow the process that's now laid out in statute. I believe as well as in the Schuler case.
Oh, so. So now that, that issue of the relationship of the planning and zoning to county commission, which. The moratorium was a separate issue, whether we wanted one or how long it could be, but that was the, the key piece and what, what caught folks' attention was. Was that the planning and zoning and appointed board by the commission could basically. Overrule or veto the commission that appointed them. And, and as Commissioner Gosar said the other day. There's lots of things in the law that don't make immediate sense to us, but, but that was the germ of the, of the, of the issue. And I think you brought it up, uh, the other day with respect to all these, uh, the law for regulations. Maybe you're going to speak to that, but that would fall into that same category of the, your, your reading of the laws that is clear that. And maybe I'm jumping ahead, that the county commission cannot amend a recommendation from planning and zoning that, that falls into the same. Framework, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So you, we did have that discussion, we've had it at a couple of these last meetings. It, it is my understanding and interpretation of the law that if the county commissioners are granted the authority within statute. To enact and have control over planning and zoning within the county. They are also within that authority, given the ability to designate that authority to a planning and zoning commission. Which Albany County has done. It doesn't remove their authority. They still have that final say. But my reading of the statute is that they, the recommendations come from planning and zoning. And the specific language is that it has to be certified. By planning and zoning to the county commissioners for the county commissioners to either approve or deny. And so my, my reading of that in the strict reading sense of it is that. The commissioners can make minor changes. That are not substantive changes or material changes to what's been certified by planning and zoning. Um. But if they're going to make those material and substantial changes. My reading is that it has to go back then to planning and zoning to be recertified to the board. Because that's the process that's outlined within the statute. Um, Commissioner Gosar has asked that we submit a request to the Attorney General to get clarification on that. And just to be sure that I'm not wrong and that we haven't designated. That that is how it should be, or if it's not how it is that the Attorney General sees that it should be. So we are working on that letter to the Attorney General in our office and it'll likely go out the end of this week. Um, to request that opinion. It often takes them several months to get back to us, but we will request it so that we can get a response from the Attorney General.
So just to parse your statement a bit, so if the county commission did want to make a change, the notion is they would have to. As you just said, send it back to planning and zoning for certification. Such certification could be denied or approved at the discretion of planning and zoning, correct?
Yes. Because, and not, not that it's anything against the commissioners, I think that's how always that it works. Anyone has the ability within the statute to petition planning and zoning, to amend any zoning plan. Or resolution, so. So then my reading is that once it's been, there's a recommendation certified by planning and zoning. If there are material changes to that, it has to go back to planning and zoning for that recertification.
So, so the Board of County Commissioners stands in the same position as, as, uh. Any, any Cub Scouts or somebody, they become just a, a group that is asking P and Z to consider these changes.
By my reading, by my reading of the statute, yes. We'll see what the Attorney General says.
Sure, sure. I'm not arguing with the statute, it's just an interesting, but so thank you.
You're welcome. And it is, it's a little odd. Um, so if we're moving in then to fiduciary duties. As board members, um, you have a duty of care, be prepared at the meetings, be informed, make sound decisions. Attend to your duties with diligence, care and skill, all those general things that we ask of board members. With regard to the duty of loyalty, um, adhere to a conflict of interest policy if there is one. I believe. In these planning and zoning. Regulations there, let me look here. I don't think it specifically addressed it. Um. Nope, there's nothing in your current rules that I have that talks about a conflict of interest policy, but there are general conflict of interest statutes which we'll run through. Don't use your position for personal gain, maintain confidentiality of anything that's communicated to you as a board member. That's not available in, to the general public. And then decisions of the board are decisions of the board. And. Should be upheld by board members. Um. The duty of obedience, know how the laws pertain to your agency, examine the governing documents of the agency and be informed of agency requirements. Which is generally all of those things that David sent out to you in that first packet when you first came on. Generally, the board speaks is one that we don't want for any board member in it, on any board to. Take the position of being able to speak for the board as a whole in their individual capacity. Which relates to the second point, don't speak of onboard business on your individual basis. And then not offer your individual opinions. Outside of the board meetings and discussion of the board. Which is just to help maintain that cohesiveness of the board and. The work that you all are doing and all of the time that you each put in. At, Mr. Moore, I actually saw your hand go up this time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kren. Uh, questions for Mr. Um, Spiegelberg?
Yes, uh, Jennifer, on a couple of past occasions, uh, after our board adjourned. Uh, there were, uh, there were a few letters sent out to, uh, various individuals. Uh, after we had made our decisions, went through all the, uh. Motions of hearing applicants and this and that. Uh, one member, uh. Asked for, said that he would not be at the meeting and, uh, found out later that. Uh, apparently he had listened in or heard the tape or something. And after we adjourned, this individual was sending out letters to, uh, uh, various people. I guess critiquing our meetings. I think that is highly unethical. Is it legal? And I think there was a gross violation in that instance and I hope it never happens again.
So there's actually nothing in statute that prohibits any of these behaviors. These are generally, um, board governance things that I have pulled from numerous. Different state groups and partially from AG handbooks. And I had some other civil attorneys throughout the state send me the training materials and things that they have used. So the purpose behind all of this is that we. That as a board, we're presenting a, you guys, not we, I'm not involved, but you're presenting a comprehensive. Position and as part of what I have at the end, which was just bad planning in my order of things in here. Is I had talked to David a little bit. I think we need to amend how recommendations are certified out of planning and zoning. Because as we go through this, one of, one of the things that we, that the board chair is to do is to make sure that minority voices. Are recognized in, in the discussions of the board. So my thought in talking to David and talking to a couple of other county attorneys in other counties was. When we're certifying recommendations from planning and zoning to the county commissioners. I think we need to change the process of how we do that to some extent, to give a summary of. The motions that were made, um, any amendments to motions that were made. And then how the votes were cast and then a summary of. Just a quick summary of any discussion so that as you're, as the certification goes to the county commissioners. Similar to when we get a decision from the court, we have the majority opinion and then if there's a dissenting opinion. It's at least recognized in there. So then, then the commissioners would know. Like when rail tie application came out of planning and zoning, it was ultimately a unanimous vote, yes. But prior to that, there was motions to add some conditions that failed. I think we should. Just in the interest of making sure that our county commissioners are as form, as informed as possible and. Removing that, that. Not need, but that, that thought where. Minority vote members, whoever they may be, feel like their voice isn't heard or recognized moving forward to the commission. That we can help remedy some of that, not just with what's gone on now, but just in general. Because I think it is important, especially where. Planning and zoning makes recommendations and certifies recommendations to the board. I think the commissioners need to know. As a whole, how it came out of planning and zoning and why. Um, Mr. Hinkley, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, um, and, and thank you, Commissioner Spiegelberg for bringing it up, uh, and for your discretion in not naming individuals. But I am the individual being named, so I guess I can out myself, uh, and, and I had, yeah, I'm, uh. Certainly open to appropriate direction on how we comport ourselves. Um, so a couple of questions, um. The City Planning Commission, which I've attended some of their meetings. At, at one point was very, very rigid, um, about any communications that took place on, on a. Application outside the meeting itself. Um, they had a lawyer who was their chair and she was quite sensitive to what would be called ex parte communication. In a, in a legal setting. So I guess my, my first question for you, Jennifer, is what guidance can you provide us on? The latitude with which we, uh. Go talk to the applicant or drive by and look at the place or talk among ourselves to try to bring to our. Formal decision-making, a, a better understanding of the project, but what? Are we allowed to talk to one another? Are we allowed to go out and do our own investigation? What, what's your sense of that? By natural decency would be to, sure, learn whatever you can by whatever means you can and, and then share it with the group. What do you think?
So I think in general, you have the ability as board members to initiate communication with. With other, other people. We'll get into board member communication as we move. Towards the end of the slide about what constitutes public meeting and what constitutes open records. We have to be very careful in all of our boards that when you have. When you're not in a meeting, that you don't have communication with enough board members. Such as that it would constitute a quorum of the board and. That if that happens, then it has to be reported and documented as a meeting and no action can be taken and it becomes a whole other thing. So you can do all that. The concern is always that if, if a board member is making any decisions based on information. That the other board members don't have, then that, that information needs to be communicated to the board as a whole. And whether that is you, if you have sent an email to ask questions of someone and you get a response. Then that response is forwarded to David to include in packets. So that everyone has all of the same information. Um, it's certainly never going to be that we say. Board members can't do their own research. I mean, part of what we ask you to do is to be fully informed. If you are driving by a location or something, that's something that anybody has the ability to do. So you're certainly welcome to do that. Um, you just want to be, if you are getting substantial information that other members don't have, that needs. If it's in writing, it should be provided to David so he can disseminate it as part of the board's packet or communicated at the meeting. Which I think you have done before, Mr. Hinkley, as have others, where they've said, oh, I spoke with so and so and learned this. The, what I'm thinking of specifically was your reference to talking to someone in industrial siding about rail tie. And you communicated that information to the board as a whole so that everybody was aware of the knowledge that you had. That's helpful. We just want to make it so that one board member isn't making decisions with information that the rest of the board doesn't have available to them.
Well, well said. So, so say I have an idea and I want to call Commissioner Kennedy and say, hey Keith, what do you think of this? And then he says, great idea, uh, let's bring it to the board. Or he says, dumb idea, forget it. I mean, that's the kind of communication that I would like to think is. Is helpful.
Yep. And because you have, because planning and zoning is a five-member board, that communication is fine. Outside of meetings and it is helpful if you've had that to just, when something's being talked about, you can just let everybody know. So it's part of the record and there's just not any question.
Okay, and that's, that's of course what's crippling to a three-member board like county commission, but that's another story. We're, we're five.
It is. That is one of the things. It is a lot more difficult at the commissioners level because there are only three of them.
So at one point, Commissioner Spiegelberg, you'll remember you asked me at the end of the meeting about, uh, I eighty. And I gave a partial response and then I followed it up with a more carefully crafted, um, and referenced written response. And I guess, now I guess my question is, Commissioner Spiegelberg, did, did you find that objectionable? Where I thought I was simply trying to answer your question in a more, in a more well, uh, bounded way.
Uh, Jennifer?
Yes, Don.
Yes, uh, this is John Spiegelberg again. I think we're kind of getting away from the, the point of my. Uh, concern. My point of concern is we meet, we listen to these applications. We, uh, mull it back and forth, we listen to the recommendations of the county planner and we take a vote. That vote is final. At the end of those meetings, we adjourn. To me, that is fixed, that's history. And I do not agree that, uh. The purpose of some of these communications that have gone out, uh, after the meeting has adjourned was to. Uh, reveal additional information. I, I had no impression of that whatsoever. To me, it, it, it was my understanding, it was more of a critique of the way uh we arrived at our decision uh in the meeting and up to that point of adjournment. And I do not believe that uh that should be condoned. I really don't. I don't know what, if, if that's allowed, then after a meeting is over and we have taken action and then it's, and, and then after the, after the adjournment has happened, uh, and then these, these uh critiques are allowed to, to uh go out after the meeting. What, what are we here for as a commission? If we don't have any, if we don't have any effect, uh, I, I don't, I do not agree that this is something about uh discovery of additional information after this has come before our commission uh what a applicant has brought to us and we rule on it and vote. That is my position.
I, I agree. And I think we were actually talking about two separate things here. Uh, my initial, my initial discussion on these slides, talking about the board speaking as one was not, it wasn't related to your comment because your comment came after, but addresses essentially your comment. Um, and, and is an attempt by me because of those that communications that went out. I don't think, I think, and I certainly am not speaking for Mr. Hinkley. My interpretation of those, when I looked at them was Mr. Hinkley giving the commissioners his dissenting viewpoint that was not communicated to the commissioners and has never been frankly by planning and zoning to the commissioners. So that's why I was talking about my thought in changing the process by which decisions are certified so that could be incorporated in what comes from planning and zoning. And then every, all of you as board members, the decision of the board is whatever the decision of the board is. And then if there are individual dissenting votes or failed amendments or any of those things, that information is also communicated to the commissioners. So they're aware of the entirety of the history that went on at planning and zoning without having to re-watch the meeting or reread an entire transcript of the meeting, just so we increase communication with the commissioners and the public in general. If they're looking just at the commissioners packet and they're not looking at the planning and zoning or attending planning and zoning meetings.
One, one more comment, Jennifer. Uh, if this is allowed, isn't this uh heading in the direction of one of the members of the the planning and zoning commission usurping the authority of the county commissioners? That, that to me doesn't fit.
I don't think that if there's any usurp, usurping of authority of the commissioners. Um, and like I mentioned, that I, I do not believe there's anything in statute that prohibits anybody from doing that. It's just general bad practice to not have a cohesive board decision that goes out. So we certainly can't change what has happened in the past, but my hope is that we can make some changes going forward so that, so that the decision is communicated to the commissioners as well as representing a clearer picture of how the vote was arrived at by the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, good. Going back to your initial uh presentation here today, uh, two of the emphasises were on, on the action of our commission members was the legality and the ethical aspect. I think the ethical aspect is what applies here. I for one would never write a letter like that. And I think it's, to me, if I did that, I would be hi- highly unethical.
Well, and the ethical aspect is governed by the statutes and we'll get to that in here. There's a lot less restriction than what you might think when you're talking about ethics as to what's codified as being ethical or not ethical. So we will, we will get there and we will go through that. Mr. Hinkley, your hand is up. Was that from this time or a previous time? And I just missed it. Sorry.
And I, I'd like to reassure my fellow commissioners that by no means would, have I been attempting an end run. And I greatly appreciate your comments, Jennifer, on this notion of a dissenting opinion. I, I am completely resistant to the notion that if our board votes three, two, or, or four, one for a particular position, that all five of us are bound to then take that banner forward into battle. Um, I love your idea and I have participated in some of these very much in the spirit of a, a dissenting opinion, but by no means would I represent my opinions as usurping any authority. I think that kind of talk is, is quite overblown. Of, of course, we voted what we voted and we did it fair and square. And that was the decision of the planning and zoning. And our recommendations go forward to the county commission exactly as they should. Uh, but I, I think our role as an advisory body does encompass, as you suggested, Jennifer, a that, that's what we're here for is to vet things in a more uh broad way than the county commission has time and resources to do it. And I strongly support the idea that we should give them the benefit of, of that full discussion. And, and I would apply the same thing to our staff and some of the comments I've made since I've been on the commission with respect to the staff reports is I would like them to also look at the, at the broader scope rather than saying, here's our judgment, give us the pros and cons. And so that's the spirit in which I have moved forward and, and uh, and I, I, I'll confess, I don't know exactly which communications you're talking about, Commissioner Spiegelberg, and would be pleased to review those and uh to modulate my, correct my behavior accordingly. Um, but yes, by all means, I think we should encourage not only a broad range of opinions and discussion amongst ourselves, but to the extent we can communicate the, the breadth of our vetting to the county commission, I think that's helpful. I think that's where you're, where you're headed, Jennifer, and, and what the mechanism for this, that is, I, I don't know. Uh, it sounds like us individually carrying that forward is, is objectionable. Um, so how do we?
I think of, uh, I think objectionable is maybe not the right word, but to, because you do speak as a board, because the board makes a decision. It's like the court, right? If, if you go to the Supreme Court and a decision is made, the court doesn't come back then and have members of the court that were in the minority. They don't come back and say, well, because I didn't like that decision, it's not the rule of law. They say this is the rule of law and my dissent was recorded and that's what it is. So it's all contained in the same document so that the, the integrity of the court or the integrity of the board remains as a unified board while still representing the, the decisions and the votes of each individual member. So that's, that was my solution to being able to do that, to keep the board unified, to still give the opportunity to give the information to the commissioners in that summarized sense of here's how the board voted, here's where the dissent was, here's a brief of the conversation. And then it gives the commissioners the ability, if they want to go back then and really listen to your meeting, they have that ability, but they don't have to. I mean, if they read the summary, read whatever and say, okay, that makes sense to me, they can move on without having to do all that. We just want to, my thought was making it easier for the commissioners as a whole to understand where the board was coming from and not just the commissioners, the public as a whole, to save the commissioners some time and work as well. Um, so we'll move on here. So here we get into the ethics, the statutory ethics part of it. Um, your position on the board can't be used for personal gain. Ethics in general is can, is outlined in nine thirteen one oh one. Specifically, it talks about nepotism and misuse of the office. We go into that further later. I think I might have cut all of that out because it's really very general. It's, you can't make a decision. A lot of it is decisions about hiring or awarding contracts to someone in your own family or to yourself through your business that will publicly benefit you to an extent that the rest of the public would not be benefited. Um, which doesn't apply to planning and zoning very often because you guys don't hire anybody. So it makes it easier. Um, maintains confidentiality in decisions and in official information, um, which is mostly if there's information communicated to you that's not part of the public record by David or by whomever. Um, if it's not available to the public, you keep that confidential to the extent that it's available confidentially. However, we also work in government, so all things are subject to FOIA requests. Recusal is when a member declines to participate in a decision because of special interest or relationship perceived to be not permitting of independent judgment. If your recusal is detrimental to the board, which it often is, um, because it's not, it's always a problem when we don't have a vote of a board member. However, if you have an interest that would necessitate your recusal, you want to on the record state what your interest is, um, state your recognition that your recusal does hinder the board's ability to function. And then if you believe you have an interest that if you were to recuse yourself, it would impair the board's ability, this is a bigger issue in like three-member boards and five-member boards, we're not quite as concerned. But there are cases where you can say, more, I'm going to use you as an example because you just came up recently. But there was, I believe the Roger Canyon permit that was across from your house. You stated on the record that it was there that um, you didn't believe that your proximity to the development impaired your ability to be impartial and fair in that development and didn't recuse yourself. And that was appropriate in that situation. But when questions come up, if you put your information on the record, it's always a better idea so that everyone of the, your other board members as well as the public is aware. And then it doesn't become an issue later when, if someone were to come back and say like, Laura lives across the street and she didn't tell anybody that she lived across the street. If you put it on the record upfront, it is knowledge from the beginning. And then if any of the public or board or anyone else has an issue, it's something that can be discussed at that time. There are penalties um for failure in ethics or recusal, which are a thousand dollar fine. You're subject to removal by the Board of County Commissioners. Um, conflicts of interests, you want to avoid the appearance of impropriety. As we're all aware, it's often how it seems, not how it is. So these questions come from, I think, the AG's handbook on conflicts of interest. And it's also taken from the statute. The questions that you want to ask yourself when there's conflicts of interest is, is your interest direct and immediate as opposed to speculative and remote? And does your interest provide you a greater benefit or a lesser detriment than it does for a large or substantial group, group of persons who are similarly situated? So those are the two big conflicts of interest questions. The third one is, does your interest give the appearance of impropriety? Although it may not be necessary to consider the appearance of impropriety and determining an actual conflict, the AG's handbook suggests that it be considered to maintain confidence in the integrity of lawmakers. These are the conflict of interest statutes. These specifically are the criminal conflict of interest statutes because as board members, you are potentially subject to criminal liability if you were to do something that was in violation of this. However, again, it is very limited. Um, if you receive compensation other than lawful compensation for any contract or for the letting of any contract or making an appointment to any contract board approving anything, um, in exchange for compensation, you're putting yourself in a bad spot, conflict of interest wise, that is fairly you know, don't do it. We all know that. But I put these up here just so you can see. Um, this is the public, pub, ye, public works contracts, ex conflict of interest section, which doesn't necessarily apply to you. I just didn't get it pulled out of this one apparently. Um, and then we have the official influence versus personal interests, the causes for recusal, appearance of conflict or personal knowledge or convent, connection. It all boils down to, are you able to make an impartial decision? Are you avoiding that prejudice that, that the information that you know that isn't commonly known would have an adverse effect or a positive effect on your vote without sharing it with the board? So this comes back to those disclosures and making sure that you share with the entirety of the board any information you may learn. Um, if there's, you want to have no outward appearance of bias, you want to administer your public duty without bias, disclose it. And if it's a big issue, if you're very concerned, you can always not take the chance and recuse yourself from the discussions. Um, this is what we just talked about. These are the ethical sections specifically lined out, just so you can see all of them. I will give you all of this PowerPoint when we're done, so you'll have all of these sites and things so at your fingertips, should you need them. Um, and then a couple of them I went through just to point them out, the official decisions and votes, don't make that official decision or vote if you have a personal or private interest. However, this is where it comes back to that direct and immediate as opposed to speculative and remote. And if you have the greater benefit or lesser detriment, this is the actual statutory language from those questions that we were talking about before. Um, if you, if that above slide applies, you want to make sure that you do abstain for voting. And any abstention from voting has to be recorded in the official record of the meeting. So the, you'd have to state your abstention and why you're doing it. And then that would be recorded in the meeting minutes. This is the penalty section again. Um, and then that's where it references the title six, which is the criminal section that we ran through before. This is a, yes, Mr. Moore.
This is Mr. Kennedy here.
Uh, just because I get to see this quite a bit. On, on that last section where you, where, where we talked about uh voting and recusal, that doesn't mean that a member wouldn't participate in the discussion. It just means that they recused themselves and that they, they won't be voting on the issue. Is that accurate?
So usually when we have a recusal, we have them not participate in the discussion as well.
Okay, that, that's a little different than it happens over in Cheyenne, so.
Oh, is it? And I will have to tell you, I haven't had that issue come up to where I've had to research it entirely. What I saw was something that said best practice was to remove yourself from the discussion entirely because oftentimes when you're recusing yourself, you have that information that's not public knowledge. And so it gives you a greater insight one way or the other, but I could be wrong. I will look and I will update you all at a later meeting.
And, and the other thought that I had there was that it wasn't so much the, the, the special knowledge that was at issue as uh the direct and immediate uh rather than, than remote so that
Okay.
It, it wasn't the idea that you might have information that wasn't available. It's the idea of the, of the personal benefit that would result.
Okay. I will look because I don't know the answer. What I did read was that it was best practice and not statutorily defined. So I will look and I will update you at the next meeting. Not the one at four, mind you. Just so we're real, real clear, Mr. Kennedy. This is the unlawful interest in contracts. This is just if any of you had a business or a contract to which a permit application would apply, you need to take some extra steps to make sure that you do not need to recuse yourself or that your vote would portray a greater interest to someone. Here are the exceptions because we're attorneys and there's statutes and there's always exceptions. So here are the exceptions that are in there. The criminal penalties. Bribery is one that exists, which is more along the lines, hopefully you're not bribing each other, but if someone were to bribe you for a vote one way or another, the person who is attempting to bribe a public servant or a public servant who accepts a bribe is a felony, which is punishable by not more than 10 years or a fine of not more than $5,000 or both. Um, compensation for a past official behavior. If, if you attempt to solicit compensation as a public servant, given your decision or vote on something after it's gone through, that's a problem, which is also a felony. And nobody wants to have to be classified as a felon. Um, soliciting unlawful compensation, this Oh, that's past behavior. This is unlawful compensation. This is if you solicit the compensation before you take the action, then it's a problem and yet again, a felony. This is the disclosure of interest and withdrawal from part participation. This goes back to the recusal language. This is just the criminal part of it. And I don't know of any case where someone's been prosecuted under the criminal part of this, but it is possible. So these are the general red flags. I should put this at the beginning. It'd make life easier. Accepting of any fees, gifts, compensations, payments or expenses or anything of value. You don't want to, you want to avoid that appearance of impropriety. With your outside employment or outside activity, you want to make sure that that's not incompatible with the discharge of your duties and responsibilities. Except there is an exception, of course, for lawful compensation. Especially in Wyoming, we all live in small communities and it's not possible to remove ourselves entirely from something that has gone on just because, you know, if if one of you were to have a landscaping business and, and then voted to approve a subdivision, that doesn't mean that because you have a landscaping business and you voted to approve a subdivision, that you have any conflict that you would have to recuse yourself from. Even though you may end up being hired by someone who builds in that subdivision later. You want to make sure you're not accepting meals, expenses, lodging, reimbursement of travel or expenses, incident to travel from other sources. Again, not necessarily much of a problem for planning and zoning, but always a good reminder. And now we're on to parliamentary procedure. So in the rules and regulations from 1975, it does say that your meetings are conducted pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order. Generally, we want to make sure that your meetings are conducted in a fair and orderly manner. Robert's Rules of Order, there we go. The state statutes take precedence over Robert's Rules and the Public Meetings Act is an issue as well. There's not a lot of conflict in there. Mostly statute tells you what you need to do and often Robert's Rules gives you the procedure for how to do it. Which has never been a planet problem at planning and zoning. Chairman Moore and, and David always do a good job of making sure everything is lined out and votes are taken and counted and all of those things that there are other boards I have sat on, not in necessarily as my capacity as this job, but where it's not quite that orderly. In general, with Robert's Rules, we consider one matter at a time, the majority rules, the minority has the right to be heard, which goes back again to the changing of that certification. The free and impartial debate, conduct business in a timely manner and then courtesy not only to the applicant, but, and the public who might be commenting. But also to fellow board members, just in general, we don't have an issue with that on this board. Quorum is a simple majority. For you guys, it's three out of five members must be present for you to have a quorum. The job of the board chair is to assure that the board is doing what it's supposed to and leads the board beating through its tasks. So here's just your general guidelines. We can skim most of this because as we mentioned, you guys do this and do it well already. It's the motion, something is introduced, you get a second, then there's the discussion, it's amended as it's needed, you move to approve and second the amendment, and then you get a vote on the motion that's on the floor. So in general, the board chair does not make motions and the board chair, they're not supposed to vote except to break a tie. It doesn't really necessarily matter because it it doesn't hurt anything. I think that's on especially large, large boards where it comes into effect here. And on planning and zoning, given that there are five of you, there are times when that board chair vote is necessary to break a tie. But the primary duty of the chair is to keep order within the meetings. There's some links to resources for Robert's Rules of Order if you should ever need them. And then as board members, your immunity from legal liability, because that question comes up on occasion. It's a qualified immunity. While you're acting within the scope of your duties, you're generally immune from any lawsuit. If it were to be brought against you in an individual capacity as a board member for any decisions that you would make, that immunity can be eroded if there are any unethical actions or wrongful purposes. If there's, if you were to be, you know, convicted of any of the ethical violations that we talked about earlier that carry either the misdemeanor or the criminal convictions, that would erode your immunity as a board member. And so as long as you are performing your duties, which the governmental entity requests, which is all of the things that you do for this board. You are generally have that qualified immunity. If you act, conduct activities outside of your scope of duties, or if it's malicious conduct, it's not protected. Oh, good Lord, you can tell I did this 14 times. Let's see, so skip that. Meetings. This is where we have to have your meetings conducted in public. This is where we'll start into the discussion about conversations with board members outside of meetings and how that happens and what we have to make sure that we're doing so we don't run afoul of any of these things. In general, advance notice of meetings has to be done. David and his office takes care of all of that and do a fabulous job of it. And the minutes are available to the public, which David also does, as well as now that we are on Zoom, the recordings of the meetings are available as well. There are generally three types of meetings, regular, special and emergency. If you have an emergency meeting, it means that it wasn't, some dire emergency comes up and then you can hold a meeting and take action, but that action has to be reconsidered at a public meeting, which which is a special meeting within a couple of days of that emergency meeting action to give the public notice and opportunity to comment. In general, as a board, you're subject to the Open Meetings Act. So deliberations have to be taken openly as provided in the, in this act. The exception to that is anything that goes into executive session, which we don't do often on this board. But you do, if there were legal consequences, you could, the other is personnel, which doesn't apply to you necessarily. Citizens have a right to attend to public meetings. The public is entitled to know what the board is doing. There is no legal requirement for allowing public comment at meetings. However, it is best practices. And as this board and other boards have done in the past, it is perfectly within the rights of the board and the chairman to conduct an efficient and appropriate meeting to limit public comment to a specific time to make sure that the flow of the meeting continues on. David attends to all of this. You don't have to sign in at public meetings. If you secret, if any member of the public seeks recognition at the board, you can state, have them state their name and affiliation, which is what you guys do and you do keep the minutes. So a meeting is a quorum of the body, which meeting can also mean like an email where everybody is attached to it if it's responding to things individually. And all of those that get sent out get included in, and if it's just for informational purposes, that's okay, no decisions can be made. But if there is anything where everybody's emailed, then it generally becomes part of the packet for planning and zoning for whatever we're doing in that month. Here's where assembly comes in by means of telephone, electronic communication. Any of that, so long as you can participate in any meeting by phone, video, however, so long as you are able to communicate contemporaneously, we don't want email strings going back and forth. That doesn't constitute a meeting and doesn't give the public the opportunity to comment. Action, we talked about a little is the transaction of official business. So if you take emergency action in a meeting, that's where we have to come back and do it again within 48 hours to give notice. If you violate Openset Meetings Act, there is the possible penalty of $750 that can be charged to each of you. Ethics overrides it. Let's see. Meeting notice we talked about. In meetings, you do have the option to recess a meeting. The county commissioners have done that recently. They started when they had their rail tie public hearing. They started it in the morning, they recessed that meeting until the evening to allow the rail tie public comment period to happen in the evening. It could happen at your meetings if you had a meeting that started and went late into the night and public comment wasn't finished, the business of the board wasn't finished. That meeting can be recessed instead of adjourned to a later date and time so that the board can continue the work that it has left on its agenda at that later date in time. This is just the emergency meeting notice. Quorum, no official action without a quorum. So if something were to happen and there were only two of you that were able to call into a meeting, that meeting would have to be not held and rescheduled for a time when a quorum could be present. Public Records Act, this is where it applies to you as board members because any of your communications with David, with members of the public that are related to your duties as a board are requestable under the Public Records Act. We get FOIA requests through the county on a fairly regular basis for all kinds of different things. So just be aware that that, any of your written communications can be subject to Public Records Act requests and you may at some point get those from the clerk. If you ever have any questions, you can always ask the clerk or you can call me and ask me and we'll get it sorted out. Here's what the public has access to, government transactions, including records associated with the transactions of business. And that response is usually happens by each department head who would reach out to you to let you know what they needed. It includes papers, photographs, film or microfilm, forms. Anything is like that is open to the public. Those papers and forms do include email or telephone notes. We get them oftentimes for notes from telephone conversations or meeting notes. Any of those things. Again, the penalty is the $750 and it can be a civil violation. And then this is the last part that I had on here, which we've talked about throughout, which was the change in the certification process to reflect what's gone on at the planning and zoning meeting so that that can be communicated effectively to the commissioners. And in doing that, I did not get something put together yet. But I will work with David to get something put together that doesn't, I don't want to cause David a whole lot of extra work or anybody a whole lot of extra work. But just a quick summary of the motions and things that have gone on, which really can be just pulled from the minutes because oftentimes that's reflected in the minutes. But if we could include that in a certification that goes with the planning and zoning staff recommendation to the commissioners, I think that might be helpful. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Uh, yes, Jennifer, Mr. Spiegelberg does.
I just have a comment. I'd like to really commend you for the research and your preparedness for this, for this educational meeting, Jennifer. I think you're, you're really an asset to not only this commission, but Albany County.
Thanks, Mr. Spiegelberg. I appreciate that.
And Jennifer, myself, I, I've been on this commission, this is my ninth year and this is the first time that in nine years that we've had a special training like this. So I appreciate, I think it's really good for everybody and, and appreciate you putting it together for us.
You're welcome. I'm happy to help. Given that I'm new too, it was helpful for me as well. And I have the same training in a various forms that will be going to our other boards that I sit on because they also have new members as well. So I'm glad to hear that it was informative and not terribly boring for you. Mr. Hinkley, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo Spiegelberg's appreciation for what you put together here. And it is a, an interesting thinking. One, having sat through some of our presentations and, and conducted many, many meetings over my years, uh, one additional piece that you might add to the Robert's Rules regarding the, the, the debate. And it's very common in, in any groups, ours as well as others, for someone to say, I call the question or question. And, and on one hand, it's simply an expression of that they're, I think we've discussed everything thoroughly and they're tired, they want to vote. But under Robert's Rules of Order, formally, that is a motion to cut off debate. And it, the chair has to run an order of the meeting, but just that, that's something that it would be useful, I think, for you to flag for folks that someone saying, I call the question, does not bring a motion to the floor. And if, if this chair chooses to recognize that as a motion, it is a non-debatable motion to cut off debate, requires the two thirds majority to pass and then brings the motion on the floor to an immediate vote. So just that, that's a little fine point that, that often gets lost in the shuffle. And then beyond that, greatly look forward to your suggestion that we find some way to better communicate what we've done to the county commission than saying, uh, listen to the tapes. It's a, it's a struggle for our staff to extract everything from our, from our discussions to make these kind of expansive minutes. So I'm anxious to to look, look forward to how you crack that nut. Certainly I'm more than, than willing to, to be of whatever assistance I can as a board member. I think it is important. It's important that we leave a, a clear record that we communicate clearly with the board and that we communicate clearly with the public. So thanks for the, for the presentation and some of the goals you've identified going forward.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you all for all of your comments and help as we've moved through this. And at this point, Ms. Chairman Moore, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Uh, Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions or anything to add for Ms. Curran?
Thanks. I, I'm, I'm out of town right now and it's hailing and we're in a house with a metal roof. So there's been a cacophony. And I, I wanted to add my thanks for the very well-prepared PowerPoint presentation. And I appreciate that you're going to send it out to us, um, because I couldn't scribble my notes down fast enough. And I, I also, being, being a person who's in the minority, I, I appreciate the effort to make sure that the minority opinion is expressed on going forward and, and hopefully that can be done in a way that isn't too much more difficult than the way it's recorded in our minutes. Thank you. I really, really appreciate this.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Curran. I appreciate that. It looks like it is 3:28, so you finished in, you know, good time. So a regular meeting starts at four and since we've advertised it for four o'clock for the public, we'll just go ahead and, and hold on till four o'clock to, to get the main meeting going. So I will start the regular meeting for planning and zoning at 4:00 PM, just so everybody knows. And Jennifer, thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I'll see you all again at four.
Um, yeah, I was looking to, we just finished a meeting. I was gonna. um, yeah, I was looking to, we just finished a meeting. I was gonna.
There we are. Okay, so now I need to go. Oh.
Hey David, this is Sean.
Yes, sir.
Would you email me the script for today's meeting?
Yeah, I'll have it just right over.
Thank you. All right, it's four o'clock. We'll go ahead and start the go ahead and start the regular meeting for Wednesday, July 14th, 2021. And we should have it memorized by now, you'd think, but I'm still waiting on the script from David. So just give me one bear with me for one second here.
Joe sent the script, so she should be on its way.
Thank you.
On my laptop for you.
I remember those SkyWest pilots when you could still look into the cockpit and they had a little rolodex that they'd go down to make sure they hit all the bases and they were on through here to the fuel. So nothing wrong with having a cheat sheet. I'm not the smartest guy in the world, so I I need to cheat. So just bear with me for one minute. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll get this going here. We're deciding that we'll look at is the Pledge of Allegiance. And since we're doing this via Zoom, probably be tough to do. But so we'll go ahead and skip the Pledge of Allegiance for today. The second thing would be roll call. Would David or Joe, would you guys be willing to do the roll for us?
Sure, Mr. Hinckley.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Spiegelberg.
Here.
Ms. Hanny.
Here.
Chairman Moore.
Here. Thank you, David. Um, so we don't need to excuse any members. We got a full commission here today. Approval of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the agenda for today's meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Mr. Spiegelberg.
Didn't you mention that at least one of the items was withdrawn from the agenda?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda with the deletion of the Stony Ridge Estates subdivision application.
All right, so we go ahead, David. Were you gonna say something?
No, that was me. I was, wait, you need a second. I'd like to speak to that motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hinckley.
Yeah, I thought it would be appropriate to leave that on. We're not going to make a decision today, but particularly in light of the discussion we just had, I had a couple of questions on the packet. So so if we could maybe have a continuing current planning projects or something, but I think there is room for a little short discussion of Stone Ridge Estates in terms of the information that's been provided to us. So can we, if we could leave that on, not as an application to be decided, but maybe just an update on planning projects, if that would be acceptable to the to Commissioner Kennedy, I'd modify his motion slightly.
Uh, I understand the applicant wished to withdraw that. And so I don't think it's in our purview to go ahead and take it up until the applicant's ready.
Uh, yeah, I was suggesting simply using it as a, as a a platform to discuss what is being provided to us by way of anticipating the next meeting when we will actually consider it. But if if we want to just not mention the word Stone Ridge, that's we can do it that way as well. But that would be, that was my point was that it's on the materials.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Um, I think what we'll do is is uh, take a how about we just, we, uh, Mr. Kennedy's motion is to approve the agenda for today's meeting minus public application, Stone Ridge Estates. And what you're suggesting, Mr. Hinckley, is is to move it off of public and that is to move it off there. Um, and move that to current planning projects or just other announcements or items. Is that correct?
Yes, I think you would take it. Well, let's just, my motion would be, it can be taken here once we dispose of this one would be to move it to current planning projects. Precisely. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think the I think the best way to handle this is, I guess, if if David? Mr. Gerch?
Yes, sir.
You know, I see Mr. He, I see Mr. Kennedy's point in the fact that, you know, the application has been removed. Is it appropriate of us to to discuss something that's not before us? I mean, we do know it's coming down the pipe. But is it not appropriate? I mean, that might be a better question for Ms. Curran, but is is it, is it even appropriate for us to to be visiting about it prior to actually seeing an application? And what are your thoughts or what are Ms. Curran's thoughts on that?
What I would say is that if, yeah, no, I, if we pull up from the application, for for one thing, there's no, the applicant's representatives are on the line today because they ask for it to be removed. So if, in the sense that we're going to talk about anything in the Stone Ridge application, I don't think that's appropriate if if we're removing that. Now, if if Mr. Hinckley's wants to discuss what was provided or what could be or should be provided in in a future packet, I think that's an appropriate discussion, just not necessarily talking about Stone Ridge, but just in general terms, talking about what should be provided or what you would like to see when these come before you. I think that would be an appropriate discussion if you, if if that's what Mr. Hinckley wants.
Okay. Um, thank you, David. Um, Mr. Kennedy, would you be opposed to um, having some sort of discussion as long as it is, does not pertain to Stone Ridge Estates specifically in other items or announcements or current planning projects?
Let's vote on, I prefer to just vote on this motion and then go on and figure out what else, because I I think that's only fair since the applicant withdrew that
Sure.
to to do that. And then, and we could, that can just be done during public comment. We don't even need to list that on agenda.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Spiegelberg?
I, I agree with Mr. Kennedy. I think that even though you might be speaking in generalities, I think there's still some implications, and I don't think that's fair to the applicant.
Okay. Um, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Mr. Hinckley, I think what we'll do is is what we'll do is is under other items, if there's something that you'd like to discuss with the board pertaining to, you know, develop it on the APOZ or or what you kind of had in mind, I think that it'd be appropriate at that time. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hinckley. So currently, we have an agenda, we have a motion on the table right now for uh, the agenda, which would be to accept the agenda with removal of Stone Ridge Estates subdivision application. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Spiegelberg. I'll go ahead and call roll. Mr. Hinckley.
Hi.
Mr. Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Ms. Hanny.
I said the dog in the background.
Don't get one vote, sorry.
No, that's fine. And Chairman Moore, myself, I. So the agenda has been approved for our meeting today. Uh, minutes. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting? And are there any additions or additions or corrections to the minutes from last month's meeting? Does minutes look okay to to everybody for last month's meeting? Do I have a motion to accept?
I would show them off.
We got a motion from Mr. Spiegelberg to move it. A second for Mr. Hinckley. We'll go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Hanny. Ms. Hanny, can you hear me?
Sorry, there's a bit of chaos in this household currently, and I I vote I.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hinckley.
Hi.
Mr. Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Mr. Kennedy.
Hi.
And Chairman Moore, myself, I. Uh, disclosures, are there any disclosures to be known at today's meeting? Mr. Hinckley, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you. And I have
I I just saw you on screen. I didn't know if you were having a hard time.
No, I was trying to tell Mara that she needed to unmute, so though I'm I have no disclosures, thank you.
No disclosures, Mr. Hinckley, Mrs. Hanny.
No, no disclosures, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spiegelberg. Disclosure.
None.
None, Mr. Kennedy.
None.
And no disclosures. And no disclosures, uh, myself. And, uh, I'm trying to do this for memory because I still haven't seen the email for the script yet, so you're gonna have to bear with me. I see that look on your face, Joe. Let me look it up.
Did everyone else get it?
Uh, I got it earlier.
I, I got it. I got it earlier, but I, I'm, I think Sean, you could forge ahead and let those guys, you got it.
Sean, I'll pull it up on the tablet.
Okay. Uh, usually again, I don't know why I didn't get this one.
Better than losing internet here, though.
That is correct.
The county internet's very selective to what it lets get out of, uh, whatever term email gel, so it may not got to you, Sean.
That's okay. Let's see, there it is, it's in my junk, sorry. Apologize. Okay, uh, we'll get, uh, moving forward here. The discussion today will be conducted in accordance with the state statutes, the rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask any individuals who address the commission to state their, uh, name, um, and their address. With that being said, we'll move into public applications, uh, public application. The first one we have is Windmill Acres subdivision application SB dash zero five dash two one. Uh, David or Joe, uh, go right ahead and, and, uh, give us the information on this public application if you would, please.
Sure, okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, you have seen this application, at least, um, majority of it, um, previously. Um, this is the Windmill Acres subdivision application. Maybe not all of you have seen this, um, but part, part of the commission has. Um, so you may recall that, um, it went through the process, it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners. Because of a legal challenge, um, the board actually went back and and worked on, because of the, the legal, um, procedure, whatever they we went back and, and pulled the, um, plat that was filed and, and then, um, there was some stipulations by the, the district court that needed to be taken care of, and so they sent the application back for further review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners. Um, and so we received the application again, I mean, it's basically the same application with some additional information that wasn't provided the first time I went through the process. Um, the, the big issue was access on, from Vista Drive to Cary, on Cary Lynn Lane to the property. There were some questions as to whether that access was sufficient and if there was legal access, um, documented. The, the board at the time did not, the planning zone, or the Board of County Commissioners did not um, make a finding that the proper documentation was provided, um, for this project, and that was the reason that they went, um, pulled it. And we're going through the process again. So, um, with that, moving on, the, the applicant for this pro, project is Carol Bacon. The location is at the very east end of Cary Lynn Lane. It actually, um, Cary Lynn Lane ends, and then their property is across another property there. Um, the request is for a three lot subdivision. The zoning of the property is rural residential. Currently, there's, uh, I believe it's vacant land. Access to this site is from Vista Drive, which is a public, um, road on Cary Lynn Lane, then across, uh, the, the neighboring property to access this site. So the district court previously, um, I think I've kind of already covered this, but they, they provided some, some a ruling that basically needed to go back through planning zone and the Board of County Commissioners. Gaveman Fish reviewed this and commented on potential fencing and landscaping concerns. The City of Laramie also reviewed this. Todd Fizer, the Assistant City Manager, provided the official comments of the City of Laramie, um, and ultimately they asked that, that this be denied. Due to not conforming with, um, the adopted city comprehensive plan. Um, and then the county engineer reviewed this as well. Why not review this? So the, the one unique thing with this application is the west portion of this property, which is the bigger lot that's on the, if you look, looking at the subdivision plat that's been provided. The west portion is where, um, few, the first future thirtieth was planned to go for future thirtieth land or inter, interchange is planned to go. Um, and Randy Greasbaugh provided the, the comments on the, this, this project. He provided in his letter also a map that kind of showed the overlay of, of what may occur. They haven't done any engineering designs on this, so the, the exact location of the interchange has not been provided if, if this in fact does get, um, put in at some point. So, um, so that was their comments. They, they basically said that, yeah, this is going to be the interchange in the future, or possible interchange in the future, and then just provided some basic information and just commented, there's not a whole lot of engineering information that's done for this. So this property is within the, the area designated prior to growth area three, or prior to growth area one by the Albany County Conference of Plan. Major street plan, um, also shows that the future thirtieth interchange will be located in the western part of the property. Um, water will be provided by onsite wells, wastewater by onsite wastewater systems, the septic systems. Additional access documentation was provided by the applicant, which I believe is included in your packet. Goes through all of the, the history there. The storm drainage plan was provided and, and, uh, reviewed by the county engineer easements. The utility easement throughout, throughout the proposed subdivision is sufficient to allow utility access to each lot. Um, roads, so Windmill Acres will be accessed by extending Cary Lynn Lane, a private road nine hundred forty feet to the west. So Cary Lynn Lane to the east of the proposed subdivision established private, um, privately maintained road, so if you look at the, the the plat, it shows how, um, Cary Lynn Lane will cross um, those properties to, directly to the west of them, and they've got an ease, there's an easement that's there, or that, that will be filed or as part of this plat. And they will build that, that, that road for, across that property to reach this property. So lot three of this parcel will be impacted again by the thirtieth street interchange. Um, and this was something the applicant was mindful about as well. And lot, and also lot three is approximately twenty four point four acres in size. And there's a note on the final plat that reads Y dot must approve and writing any proposed structures for lot three. Lot three will be impacted by future thirtieth street interchange as depicted on the major street plan. So this was put on there to ensure that future lot owner will not be impacted if they built something on there, um, without permission of Y dot. Um, they won't have to remove it in the future to, to build this interchange. Road maintenance, the applicant drafted a road maintenance agreement for the use of Cary Lynn Lane. That portion that they will, will, well, well, for the entire lane, they, they sent, they drafted the road maintenance agreement, sent it out to the landowners along Cary Lynn Lane and didn't receive anything back, um, from them. So one method to fulfill the requirement that, that we want to have this road maintenance agreement, one method to fulfill that is is to, uh, make documented attempts to come into a contract with those that maintain the road, and if they don't, um, enter into their contract, then, then this doesn't necessarily mean the board has to, to, um, not approve the application if they do that. Also, road maintenance for the, the road that will be built across the neighboring property will need to be taken care of in covenants or road maintenance scheme as well. Um, financial assurance, so we did receive financial assurance for the building of the road. Um, so we, we have that in hand, that, that regular, that requirement's been fulfilled. Fire protection, this is a three lot subdivision and the fire ward is waived fire safety requirements for, um, subdivisions with three lots or less. Notice was provided as required. Findings of fact, the information provided above in the staff report is incorporated here as findings of fact. Um, the conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Um, and then just a brief analysis, so this, this proposal is consistent with what's existing in the area. Um, this is basically a residential area. Um, there, the lots, um, in, in the vicinity or between one and a quarter acres to about nine acres in size. Um, this pro, proposal will create a five acre lot, a ten acre lot, and then twenty four acre lot. So the average lot size for this proposal is thirteen acres per lot. Um, and the, the impacts of the existing area will be minimal. Um, this type of development is, is again, consistent with this area. So the proposal received comments from the City of Laramie. Their comments have been addressed in the draft letter provided by staff. Um, the existing residential lots, future location of thirtieth inner, uh, three street interchange and I eighty um, currently created, he's created a barrier for future expansion of the City of Laramie, so if the city wants to expand, um, there's not really much place to go, even if they, they did explain, expand into this area. Um, I mean, especially where developments already occurred in this area and and then the, so the thirtieth street, um, interchange will impact the development. And I just kind of over, went over the comments, you know, the whiteout provided those comments where the future interchange will go, but didn't, didn't really give, give us any engineering, um, for the interchange. But just, and that was why this was designed the way it was by the applicant is to leave lot three pretty much open for construction of the interchange. Um, again, financially, our assurance was provided. Um, and the road maintenance agreement for the portion of Cary Lynn Lane that will be built, um, by the applicant must be filed with the, the final plat. And then, uh, yeah, so the recommendation is approve all the preliminary and final plats and subdivision permit for the Windmill Acres subdivision based upon incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law stated in the staff report contingent upon receipt of all the the requirements that need to be taken care of before the approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Is there any questions for myself?
Uh, I'll go around everybody and, and, um, have, give everybody an opportunity to ask questions, David. Uh, Mr. Spiegelberg, go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, in recalling, uh, when this matter came up a couple of times at our meetings, I think the, the, uh, the legal opinion given to us was that, uh, yes, they did have, uh, legal access, I, I'm, I'm still a little cloudy on that. But in reading, uh, this district court ruling, um, apparently we sent it on to the county commissioners with, uh, recommendation that it passed. And if I read this correctly, uh, the county commissioners, um, was that they, because of the finding was not made, that adequate access to the property was documented. Uh, therefore, they, the district court recommended that they send it back to us. Well, to me, uh, we're not lawyers. And I think that's putting the monkey on our back to go ahead and, uh, reapprove something when, when apparently, uh, they did not make that finding that there was, uh, legal access, and I, I, uh, I could not, I could not go ahead and vote for this now because I think that they're they've been told by the court that there's no legal access. I guess it doesn't matter if, uh, the finding was, uh, was not made by the county commissioners or, or made by us, I, I mean, the district court has said, they, they've, uh, they've rejected it, so I don't think it's fair for us to, uh, go back and, and even reconsider this, and personally, I, I cannot vote to, uh, uh, recommend it based on what the, the district court finding was.
So, so John?
Can I, can, let me, guys, one more, one more comment. Am I correct that we were advised by the, uh, county attorney's office that, yes, they did have access?
So I'll leave that, that question to, um, Jennifer Curran, the Deputy County Attorney. Um, but the rest of it, so John, we have received additional information about the access, so that's the difference between now and then. Um, we, we have received the, the, the applicant has provided us more information on the, the legal access that they are documenting, I guess, so, but I'll let Jennifer, um, I guess, address your other question.
Do they have, do they have access, legal access, or don't they? That's the main question.
And all that Jennifer answered that one.
Chairman Moore, if it's all right with you.
Yes, please.
So John, what the court order found was that there was nothing in the record that supported legal access, so it was determined to be sent back so that it could be rereviewed to determine if there was legal access. At this point, the applicant has provided the information that's included in your packet now, that wasn't included in the prior packet. And this application, or the information that's provided, shows that those that, I think it's lot seven and eight, was the dominant estate that created what is now Cary Lynn Lane for the benefit of all of the landowners in those lots in front of it, as well as for themselves to access that property. So in looking at the documentation that's provided, it appears to me that there is sufficient legal access for those properties to use the road. I see Mr. Edwards is on the line, and I'm sure he has a difference of opinion. Um, but for purposes of determining whether or not there's enough information provided, I do think there's enough information provided to say that there is access via the existing easement on Cary Lynn Lane.
Good.
Can I speak?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I was reading through all of these, uh, these papers here on this matter. And I, I read through and saw the, the list of the, uh, current property owners that do have access, uh, to, on Cary Lynn Lane. And, uh, but I don't, I, I guess the question for me, I see their concern. They have access for their homes, are there, so forth and so on, but I, the, uh, what I keep hearing, um, is that those people were concerned that that's going to become a major thoroughfare if that's ever annexed and goes on into vacant land over there, and I, I do share their concern. There's, there's quite a list of property owners there, and I, I'm familiar with about half of them and where they have their homes and everything, and I, and I share their concern. If that, if, uh, they can access this now, but if, if that, if adjoining lands are eventually annexed and so forth and developed, uh, I think I heard something that the city wouldn't, uh, include that in a in a subdivision or something if that ever came about, but, uh, I, I share those property owners' concern this. Since this thing came out down from the district court, I have a whole different opinion of this now.
All right, thank you, John. Um, Mr. Hinckley, I, uh, before I move on, is that, uh, do you have any other questions for David?
No, that's fine. Thank, thank you, John.
Um, Mr. Hinckley, I saw that your hand was up. Any questions for, uh, staff, for David?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I just annotated this as I was reading it, so I, I'll just kind of go through those, if that's all right. At the top, it says, request, create a three lot subdivision, but am I understanding correctly that we are being asked to approve both preliminary and the final plats at this point?
Yes.
That, that's the request. Um, and so a moment ago, you said that will have to be shown on the final plat, so we don't have the final plat. But I guess my question is, what, why are we not doing this in two pieces?
What, what hasn't been shown on the final plat?
You just said that they had to show something on the final plat. Was it a road easement or?
No, that everything's on the plats that are required, it's just that, um, they'll need to provide, or when they file the final plat, they do have to have a road maintenance agreement for that road that's filed at the same time.
Okay, so, and that kind of goes to one of my later questions. If there are things that they haven't filed that they have to, why are we not waiting until they've filed those?
Well, you, I mean, it's hard to create a road maintenance agreement prior to even, I mean, why create a road maintenance agreement, file it, and then it gets not approved? And there's no road to, for the maintenance agreement. So this is just standard protocol that what we we usually follow is that we just require that road maintenance agreement to be filed with the plat. So at the same time, both of those documents are filed and are on record. That's, I mean, if you want to change it, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but we can change that.
Okay, I was just trying to understand this notion of approving it if they do certain things, and then it's, then you as planning staff would police whether they actually did those or not. Is that the procedure?
Correct.
Okay, because we won't, we wouldn't see it again then.
Right, and and, you know, and there may be things that we bring up that, you know, maybe staff recommends that we do that, but maybe you really want to see that done before. And, you know, that's totally appropriate, but the road maintenance agreement is one that it just makes sense to be filed at the same time with the final plat.
Okay. Okay, I I guess I'm just kind of exploring this territory of contingent approvals. Later in the discussion in the application, they talk about the family subdivision process. Can you just kind of walk us through, is this being brought under family, or it was at one time? Or talk us through that, how does this relate to the family subdivision process?
This, well, they can't, I I guess I don't.
Okay, so now, in the, in the, the long discussion that that came up, maybe it was some earlier versions of the application. And my question is, is this being brought to us under the family subdivision provisions?
Oh, no, so the to come before you. This is an actual subdivision that has to meet all of the requirements of the subdivision standards. So family subdivision is an exemption by state statute that basically is a little bit more hands off, and we don't go through this process. There's not application for it.
Okay, that that isn't this. The, then you refer to the major street plan. It it, does the county have a major street plan, or is that the cities?
The city, the county, and Whiteup have have the the same major street plan. It's all, it's adopted by all three entities. So it's, it's, it's one and the same, it's all of our plan.
Okay, just a little clarification there. And then this question that Commissioner Speaker brought up about why is this different than before? So the access agreement, we're being advised by council that they now have demonstrated legal access, just to clarify exactly what I think we just heard from Jennifer, is that correct?
I believe that's what Jennifer said, yes.
I mean, the way you've written it is that the Board of County Commissioners has determined the applicant has provided sufficient documentation, but but we as their advisors are basically asking ourselves the same question. So your staff analysis is that they have now provided sufficient documentation of access, is that correct?
Yeah, based on what the county attorney's office has said, yes, I would say yes.
Okay, so then that's a finding that we will make based on your representation. On the roads, there was discussion about the maintenance agreement, but there were some objections and have been earlier, as we all know from Ivanoff, about, do they have permission to use this road?
Do they have permission?
That's, that's, is that the easement that we're opining as a legal matter, they do have the right to use this road?
Yes, I mean, where we've determined, or at least legal counsel and has determined that that we have access across this road, then yes, we, this, they have access to the road.
And the size issues that we heard from Ivanoff, where do those stand?
The size issues, I mean, it's already a developed road, the easement exists. We're not going to make them go back and retrofit everything and and change. I mean, you can't go back and change the the size of the rightaways unless all of the property owners want to do that. So.
But I'm
Good.
Well, I'm remembering the Ivanoff discussion where this question of if they're going to use this road, it has to be brought up to certain width standards. Has that been resolved, or where are we on that question? Is it not relevant to this, this as it was to Ivanoff?
Well, it's the same road. But I I don't know, maybe Jennifer can help answer that question. I mean, where it already exists, we're not making them upgrade it or change the size of the rightaway to reach the road because it's there already.
But there are those who have argued that we should, and our response is, we know, know that's not necessary. Is that the finding here?
I believe so. Jennifer, do you want to chime in?
So, Burn, I think the recommendation from David and from our office is that from the documentation we've been provided, it appears as though this subdivision has the ability to use Cary Lynn Lane. If the landowners on Cary Lynn Lane disagree with that, then they can certainly make their arguments as well. But from the information we've been provided here, it does appear as though the Bacons do have access to use Cary Lynn Lane based on the easements that have been granted. And I think David's statement is what was presented with regard to Ivanoff and with regard to this property is that for the part of Cary Lynn that exists already, they don't have to bring that up to city standards. For the portion of the road that they are proposing to build for the easement that goes through Dave and Belinda Bacon's property, that section of road would have to be built to road standards because it's a new road that would be constructed.
Thank you. In the staff report, it refers to a draft letter provided by staff. I didn't see that draft letter, was it in here somewhere?
Let me look.
It it should have been in our packet, Burn.
It seemed to me that it would be relevant, and I, and I didn't see it. And and then, I guess, so I'm operating somewhat blind here. That draft, has it been presented to the county commission? I guess not, but it seems like we ought to see it before we recommend it. Are we being asked to, David, to to endorse this draft response? And and again, I'm reluctant to endorse something that I haven't seen.
And I think that you, Burn, this is Jennifer and Chairman Moore, sorry to interrupt. I think that that draft letter is what's required by the statute for the commissioners to send out. Or it's not, there's a letter that's required by the commissioners to be sent out to address any issues that brought up by the city with regard to any application. As part of the procedure that goes on in the office, David always provides a draft of that letter to the commissioners in their packets. I don't know if it's in yours or not, I scanned quickly and I didn't see it. But it's provided to the commissioners as a starting point. Should they choose to approve the Ivanoff subdivision, it gives them a starting point to send that letter, as is required by statute, back to the city. And I don't necessarily think it's something, that draft letter is not something that the Planning and Zoning Commission necessarily has to be a part of. That's the letter that's required to be sent by the commissioners if the subdivision is approved over the objections that have been filed by the city.
And and then I think that the city's letter, they represented it as then, is that this county has to respond to their, so they've sent a letter and objecting, and the county has to respond, and that's the end of it, or does the city get to debate it a couple of rounds? How does that work?
The city has the opportunity to participate at the public hearings, like everybody else. And then it's that formal response letter that gets sent back once, if, and it's only sent back if the commission makes a decision to approve a subdivision that has been objected to by the city.
Okay. So it would, it would strike me in our advisory role that that knowing the county's response to the city's objections would be relevant to our discussions. I mean, I I read the city's letter, and I'm thinking, well, what about this, what about this, what about that? And apparently, my whatabouts have all been answered in writing, but we haven't been given the benefit of that writing. So I guess the flag I'm raising is perhaps our knowledge is not as complete as it should be as we move forward.
Certainly. I I apologize, I don't think it is in here. So, yeah, I'm not sure why I didn't get it in here, but I don't see it as well, so. But as Jennifer said, this is a a letter that would need to be responded to by the Board of County Commissioners. And it's just a draft that I provide for them to look at because they may be changing the whole thing or whatever, I mean, they can take, take or leave what whatever was addressed in there. I mean, if you do have questions about the letter provided by the city, I'd be happy to address those. Our, you know, my perspective, I guess.
Yeah, there was a lot of material there, and I I guess I just hate to think that we're just saying, here, county commission, do whatever you want, and we, we haven't completed our review. Whether it's appropriate and useful to have us go through that orally based on their letter, I guess I defer to you on that. But we can come back to that. Okay, under the staff recommendation, recommendation, we say, based on conclusions of law stated in the staff report, contingent upon receipt of items required, maybe this is a format thing, it would seem useful to me to then list those so that I'm not just having to read back through and pick out the things. But that would be like your maintenance agreement, for example?
Sure.
Okay, what what other items are there in that list?
The financial assurance, we didn't have at the time that I wrote the application, but I, we've received that since then, so that would have been the other item.
Okay, so then it's the staff recommendation is to say, go ahead and approve final and preliminary and final plat contingent on them receiving. And then we could list the financial assurance, the maintenance plan.
Sure, yeah.
We got comments from the county engineer that were quite lengthy. Have all those been addressed?
Yes.
Okay. Was it Game and Fish, their comment letter, the introduction of non-meady species should be restricted? Are we so restricting?
That's, that's, you're prerogative to do that if you like, but that's not something that's in my staff report and recommended by staff.
Okay, so, so planning department's reading of the Game and Fish letter is, thank you very much, we don't think we need to do that. Is that correct? I'm just trying to dispose of the comments that were made.
Right, I mean, it's up to you, is what I'm saying. It's like I, but you know, if if you would like to do that, I mean, that's something that you guys can do, but staff isn't necessarily recommending that.
Isn't recommending that, I'm just trying to be clear on where everybody lands. You've looked at that, you've considered it, you've declined to recommend that, correct? I just wanted to know where, where you are as our advisors, and then we're advisors to the board.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and then I run it into this long, this long discussion from the city now. Earlier, okay, at the end of that, they say that any comment in which the board disagrees with the board shall respond in writing to the items of disagreement. Sounds like Jennifer agrees that they stated that correctly. And your recommendation is that we just defer that whole discussion to the Board of County Commissioners. Is that where we are?
Differ discussion from the city's letter?
City's letter, I mean, they raised just a whole raft of of points. You have apparently prepared a draft response, but your recommendation to us is not to concern ourselves with that response, but rather just to send the whole thing on to county commission with a due pass. Is that, again, I'm trying to understand what it is you're suggesting.
The, their, their responses were not a conservative mine, so yeah, I would have no problems recommending a pass.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions for staff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for staff?
I have no questions for staff. I, I'm comfortable that that draft letter is within the purview of the county commissioners to respond to that, not necessarily ours. We could certainly recommend something, but we, that the statutory burden of that is on the commissioners, not on us.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I I have just a a couple of questions, please. Regarding this 30th Street Interchange and making a, I guess, a note on the final plat, is that the same as a deed restriction? Does it have the same force of law?
Yes, anything on the plat becomes legal, it's a legal document, and we would have to enforce that, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I I'm, that's, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Spiegelberg, do you have an additional comment?
Well, I I guess I'm going to have to correct myself. I looked diligently in this packet we got, and I just finally discovered the agreement for ingress and egress. And I know the person way back, he's passed away now, that made these, these agreements and so forth. So I guess based on that, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Kennedy's comment that I think really this should just go back to the county commissioners because if this evidence has been presented for ingress and egress, it looks to me like it, I don't know why it ever came to us.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegelberg. And I don't have any comments or questions for staff at this point. At this point, we'll give the applicant or applicant's representative an opportunity to address the the commission. And and then if we have any questions for the applicant or applicant's representative, what we'll do is, is I'll go back around to everybody and and have them ask questions. So at this time, the applicant or applicant representative, go ahead and introduce yourself and and make yourself available.
My name is Joanne Fulton. I represent Windmill Acres subdivision, Carol Bacon. Mr. Bacon, since the application was filed, is deceased. And it is Carol's wish that the application continue to move forward and is seeking approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and and hopefully an audience with the Albany County Commissioners. Chairman Moore and distinguished members of this commission, I want to try to give you a historical context, and I agree with what Mr. Hinkley, what Mr. Kennedy, what Mr. Gertz, and in some part with Mr. Spiegelberg, the comments that have already been made. The application was originally filed in April 2020. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the first one, was July 8, 2020. So we're just a year over that last appearance in front of this commission. In those minutes, and I've reviewed all of the documents, both within the application, the minutes and recordings of these various meetings, and also the district court ruling. I think it's important to note that that there was, there were express findings that Ms. Bacon, Windmill Acres subdivision had met, and in most cases exceeded the county requirements for being able to develop her property. With that being said, the county commissioners did come in with a two in favor and one oppose. It was unclear from the record, my read of the record, what the opposition's point of view was. And so I'm not able to give you clarification on that. Once the board, the county commissioners, had approved this application, within a few weeks after Mr. Edwards representing other homeowners along Cary Lynn Lane filed an appeal, and the sole basis for that appeal, as I read, the petition for review filed an appeal and the sole basis for that appeal, as I read the petition for review, was the fact that the approval lacked a discussion regarding legal access. I came on to the case late. At that point in time, Ms. Bacon was, had employed another attorney, local attorney here in town. And there were no motions to intervene, no interaction between Ms. Bacon, the other landowners and/or the county at that point. It was done on, without her input. But in November, when it became clear that there was going to be a stipulation and that likely the issue, the approval would be remanded back to Albany County Commissioners, I did file a motion in the district court to intervene in that district court appeal so that Ms. Bacon could have some input as to and limitation on what would be reviewed once it was returned or remanded. When the order came down, there was, my motion was pending as, and the county attorney had filed a response, so it was a contested motion at that time. And I contacted the district court asking for a hearing. And at that point, an order had been entered, already entered, without addressing the motion to intervene, without giving Ms. Bacon an opportunity for input. And that motion or that order was entered. Several days later, the order, I believe, was entered on the 12th. The order addressing my motion to intervene and the county attorney's opposition to that motion was, was then there, an order was entered indicating that the district court did not have jurisdiction, although there was jurisdiction when the motion was filed. All that being said, there could have been a clarification, if you will, of what needed to be reviewed once it was remanded. And my opinion, and the county attorney, Jennifer Curran now, and Mr. Gertz can vouch for the fact that I have written a letter to both of them suggesting that there be a limitation to legal access on the review. And I did not feel, I felt that it was duplication, essentially a waste of time for the commission to have to review this, this application again. There is nothing new here. With the sole exception, Ms. Bacon has now produced all of the documents to demonstrate there is legal access to her property. With that being said, I do have a very, I, I've provided the commission through Mr. Gertz all of the legal documents doing the chain of title. And if you have questions related to that, I'm happy to answer anything that, or concerns that you might have. I've also gone through those documents with Jennifer Curran and I believe that she will affirm the fact that the documents show a chain of title and a chain of legal access that existed the day the application was filed and continues to exist even as we sit here today. I will not go into a lot of detail about that chain of title because I, I don't feel that it's necessary, given the fact that these documents are recorded, they are law. Ms. Bacon, in fact, and the Bacon property is the dominant estate. The servant, servient state is the other residence on Cary Lynn Lane. I do want to refer you to exhibit, or exhibit seven in the materials. And those are maps that were provided to me from the First American Title Insurance Company. I want the commission to know that this legal access question was submitted to First American Title Insurance Company, not once, but twice. And both times, those, those arguments related to legal access were answered and resolved by First American Title Insurance Company. The visual that I want you to see with the map is in the fourth map in, in exhibit seven. You'll see that the Bacon property is by far the largest square footage of area property existing. The people who are concerned and/or complaining that perhaps this would become a thoroughfare have the smallest of the estate. They are at the beginning of, of the road off of Vista. But bear in mind that the Bacon subdivision, the Windmill Acre subdivision is only a three lot development. And Lot Three, which is the largest of the property, 24 acres, is not going to be developed. I would have you look at specifically the plat, the final plat, which was filed and then vacated, which is exhibit 11 in my materials. And you'll see on that map that the road one exists, it is not a new construction. And that is the reason for the letter of credit. It must conform in its improvement with county regulations. And those county regulations are are found in the materials as well. But it specifically says, public access road right of way, minimum width of 80 feet and minimum roadbed width of 24 feet. However, and that's a huge however for a small subdivision. Road white, right of way shall be minimum of 50 feet and an all-weather roadbed width of 16 feet shall be required. Now granted, the road at, at the end of Cary Lynn Lane is certainly, it needs to be improved. And that's what the letter of credit is for and, but there will be no new road. It is an improvement of the existing road that goes on to and services the easement to the Bacon property. So I wanted to point that out to you. Second important thing to note on that final plat is that as you come up off of Cary Lane, Lynn Lane, you will see that after it enters the Bacon property, it shows a cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac ends the road there and services only lots one and two. It does not service Lot Three. And there has never been an intent or a wish to develop Lot Three because the Bacon's have known that the 30th Street interchange was, was there. It has been surveyed by the Wyoming Department of Transportation. There are survey stakes out there. I've been out there and looked and walked the property and I know exactly where those survey stakes are, are posted. So that piece, I want to give the commission assurance that there is no plan, there has never been a plan to develop that Lot Three. And the, the access actually ends with that cul-de-sac servicing Lot One and Lot Two on the final plat. I do think it's important. I'm somewhat new to the process, the processes that we've been working with. And it appears to me that there is something inherently wrong with a system or process that provides articulated and legislated regulations for people to subdivide their property. And then without notice to the individual, the, the or to the county resident that they can follow all of the county regs, they can do everything to perfection, they can do in excess. And yet the city can, can choose to, then in a letter, choose to deny ba- based on a city urban development plan. I might add that that plan was, was put together in 2007. And it has not been updated and it, it is the plan that was cited in the city letter to Ms. Bacon. It is also the plan that articulate, that failed to articulate with any specificity, any negative impacts that this subdivision would have on city development. It's also important to know that the maps that they provided even show that there is urban subdivision, urban residential subdivisions and rural subdivisions. And they are side by side. The Bacon property is surrounded and is an island unto itself within the, the city maps and their city urban plan. And, and my other final objection with regard to the city's letter and, and the way that it, it handles these, these processes is in the letter that was given to, was included in our application, it talks about urban development in the airport, to the airport. The airport isn't even with, within a mile of our property. It's not relevant to our property. I believe that the city uses what is, what I would call somewhat of a form letter. It did not identify the, the Bacon subdivision in it with any specificity and it did not identify any negative impacts that these two lots would have on urban development. So I'm asking, I, I, I feel like that the, the, this, this hearing, this commission, it was dished back to you, in my opinion, by mistake. It should have just gone back to the Albany County Commissioners. The approval is there and the, we can't relitigate what has already been approved. There is legal access. We've provided that. You can make a finding as to that. But then it goes back to the county commissioners, in my opinion, for further review and discussion if they choose to regarding this legal access question. So I, on behalf of Ms. Bacon, I'm respectfully asking you to reaffirm your approval on her pending application and move this process where it should have been to begin with, from the district court to the Albany County Commissioners for further discussion. And I do appreciate your time and I know that my presentation was somewhat lengthy, but I am available to answer any and all questions. I don't want this commission to, to leave today with a single reservation about whether the approval of this subdivision is appropriate or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. We sure appreciate that. If you'd be available for any questions from the commission, I'll go around and ask members of the commission if they have questions for you. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Fulton. Mr. Spiegelberg, do you have any questions for Ms. Fulton?
No, and I think she gave a shed light on every aspect of this. Very enlightening.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Hinkley?
No, agree. A wonderful presentation and, and appreciate all of the effort that you've gone to to do that. My only concerns are procedural. So, Mr. Chairman, if it appropriate, I would be interested in Ms. Curran's comments on a couple of points that Ms. Fulton raised. Is that okay?
That would be just fine. Go ahead and ask Ms. Curran.
Well, one was the, this procedural thing. Is that, does that make sense that this shouldn't be in front of us at all, that we, that we, you guys before most recent additions, said everything was fine and the only issue was the legal access. Now that that's been resolved, is it appropriate that we, this be and z, go back and look at the whole thing all over again and, and relook at all the objections? Is it a legal matter?
So the issue is one that Ms. Fulton and I had discussed and the language of the order says that the approval of the final preliminary and final plat was reversed. And that the final plat was vacated to be, was vacated and declared to be no force in effect and that it was remanded for further proceedings before the Planning and Zoning Commissioners in accordance with Wyoming statute and Albany County regulations. What I had told Ms. Fulton previously was because it was not specifically remanded for legal access purposes that I thought it was something that should be reconsidered by this commission and by the Board of County Commissioners as a new document when it was presented to them.
Great answer. Thank you. Then maybe further down, I, I guess I would still like to hear the response, and maybe you'll have to do it orally, Dave, and we can do that in our debate later on, to the, to the city letter. I, I just feel like they raised a lot of good points that I hadn't considered before me because I'm new, but, and I, and I'm not suggesting that that there aren't good responses, but I think I would like to hear them before I take a vote with respect of what we recommend to the, to the county commission. I particularly appreciate your point, Ms. Fulton, that the city neglected to identify whatever harm would occur to them if this were approved. That seems like a key point. I, I would still like to understand those issues better. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I had at this point.
I would also point out, Mr. Hinkley and Mr. Chair, that this is one of those situations where we talked about in our training earlier was the question that has to be before you is, does this permit application comply with the rules and regulations that are in place in Albany County? So it's certainly worth listening to the city's concerns and addressing them. But unless they directly relate to what is in front of you and based in Albany County zoning resolutions, then your ability to consider them as to, as a basis for denial of a permit is limited.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions for the applicant's representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Fulton did a great job of explaining Ms. Bacon's position. And I, I don't have any questions, but I would like to extend condolences to Ms. Bacon on her loss.
It's been a difficult time for Ms. Bacon and then to pile on something that he started and she's trying to finish has been an interesting journey to get up to speed on, I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. And I, I don't have any questions for you myself. And sure appreciate your comments. At this point, and, and you'll stay on the line because there might be additional questions for you, but we'll move on through the public comment period. At this point, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. And so for public comments, anybody wishing to speak on this matter, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. At this time, it looks like Mr. Edwards, your hand is up. The floor is yours, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mitch Edwards. I'm with the law firm of Nicholson Tangeman and I am presenting here today asking that you recommend that this subdivision application be denied. My clients for the record are David Montgomery, Dennis Laurie Lester, Charles Atencio and Cindy Berry, Patricia Butler, Roger and Angelina Bedell, Terry Cook, Arvin Martinez, Roy and Doris Bane, and Stephen and Tamara Lindsay. All of those individuals are individuals who own parcels of property, including the property of Cary Lynn Lane in lots seven and eight of section two. I specifically want to point out to you that they are the owners of property and government's lots seven and eight because that will be pertinent in our discussion with regard to legal access. As you're aware, has been discussed, Ms. Bacon is attempting to utilize my client's property and their private road in order to access her subdivision from the public road Vista Drive. The, the issue here with respect to legal access is we do not believe that Ms. Bacon has any legal access. The regulations which come from the statute. Require that the commission find not that documentation has been provided, but. That adequate access has been provided. And that all proposed streets, alleys and roadways within the subdivision conform to the minimum standards adopted by the board. And applied uniformly throughout the county. That's in chapter four, section five subsection J, minimum requirements for subdivision permits. Now, I want to address the whether or not there's access before we get into the issue of adequate access. The documentation that was provided. Um, you have to recognize that Ms. Bacon is asking for a subdivision. In governmental lots five and six. And by way of background, this particular property was once part of the Fort Saunders Military Reservation. It was the very northeastern portion of that reservation. And so because of that. This area has government, what are called governmental lots by cadastral survey. The governmental lots that we're talking about are lots five, six, seven and eight. My clients are the owners of parcels within governmental lots seven and eight. Ms. Bacon is attempting to subdivide in governmental lots five and six. Now, the documentation that was provided, and if you look at the analysis that Ms. uh. Ms. Fulton provided, which is, I think, page twenty-four of your packet. There's an, an item D. And an item C that referenced an easement for Kerry Lynn Lane. Um, of forty feet for the benefit of the owners in lots seven and eight. And if you go to that particular document that's being referenced, which is on page thirty. Of the packet, which is the cancellation of restricted easements. The owners of property within lots seven and eight. Provided that they shall reserve an easement forty feet in width along the eastwestern line. Of said lots for ingress and egress in favor of other property owners in lots seven and eight. The point being that those documents, if they provide, convey or reserve an easement to anybody. It is for the benefit of only those owners of property within governmental lots seven and eight. Nowhere within that document is there any reference whatsoever to any easements. Being granted, conveyed or reserved to the, to the property owners of governmental lots five and six. So, the documents provided do not provide any legal access for the property that is being subdivided. So problem number one is there is no legal documentation. Providing the easement for governmental lots five and six, which is what the subdivision application is for. Now, subsequent to that, let's assume just for argument's sake that maybe there is an easement there. The regulations further provide the minimum standards that are required to be made. Of those roads and there is a minimum for a small lot subdivision. Of a fifty foot wide right of way. If you just look at these documents on their face, the documents on their face only reserve a forty foot. Right of way. So it cannot meet the fifty foot requirement. Now, the argument is interesting to me that, that Ms. Fulton and and the county. Staff is making that, well, Kerry Lynn Lane is an existing road and we don't have to. Um, therefore go out and and meet the minimum requirements in order to subdivide. Um, first of all, there are minimum requirements in order to. Be entitled to a subdivision. They have to be met and those actually come from statute. Um, in addition to the county regulations. Second of all, let's imagine that this was a simple two-track that was wide enough for a road to go down. Is what the county and Ms. Bacon's position is, is that, well, it doesn't matter. That's sufficient access. And it's and it's adequate access, even though the standards require something more. I submit to you the answer that is no, because I know of two other subdivisions in this county. Um, and the only other ones that have come up with respect to this issue along Sotanka Road. Which is a private road coming off of a county road. And one was the Williams subdivision where I think Ms. Curran. Maybe represented them in regard to that when she was in private practice. And and then the Hamel subdivision where those subdivisions were specifically required. To obtain right of ways of of sufficient width of eighty feet in that case. And then to improve those roads, um, to the county's subdivision standards as part of their approval of their subdivision. Um, so the fact that a road exists doesn't mean that it's just okay because the road exists. It still has to meet the minimum requirements. Now, the legislature did that intentionally because you cannot condemn a private road access in order to subdivide and that is limited to thirty feet in width. And they limited that to thirty feet in width because the requirement for a subdivision. Is greater than thirty feet in width. So you cannot condemn a private access in order to subdivide. Now, in addition, um, to that fifty foot requirement. This, the statute and regulations, um, and I'm talking about Wyoming statute thirty-four twelve one oh three requires the county to ensure that. Flat application meets and conforms to any adopted street plans and contains all areas for streets, roads and alleys that are dedicated right of way. In regard to that, the the county adopted regulation in chapter, um. I believe it's six, but it might be four. I might have messed up in my notes here in section four subsection A one. That talks about the standard in the event that a subdivision is within one mile of the city limits. And it provides that the standard regarding the right of way, the roadway width, the curbs and gutters and other requirements of the municipality. Will also apply. And that's in conformance with the state statute. And if you look to the city regulations, because Ms. Bacon's property is within one mile. She would be required to have a sixty foot right of way, a roadway of forty-six feet. And she would be required to pave and gutter any access to the property. Um, at least of twenty-eight feet in width. And the county is not requiring her to do that, which your code actually requires be done in the event that the subdivision is within one mile of the city limits. And so, um, with all of those reasons, the commission and this board cannot recommend approval because they can't find. That what is required and that is, again. That adequate access has been provided that all proposed streets, alleys and roadways. Within the subdivision conform to the minimum standards adopted by the board and applied uniformly throughout the county. And so, for those reasons, we would ask that you recommend denial of this subdivision. Um, we understand the plight and it's un-unfortunate for Ms. Bacon, but. The truth of the matter is governmental lots five and six that she's trying to subdivide. Do not have legal access across our client's property. She has no right to use Kerry Lynn Lane or a subdivision. And even if she did, she would have to meet other standards that she can't meet and. And so for those reasons, please recommend denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Um. Ms. Uh, Curran?
Yes, Chairman Moore.
Um, I was going to ask you, um, so what Mr. Um, Edwards is referring to, what's? Um, just to reaffirm, um, your thoughts or, um, about the access. Issue because I I think that that's, um. Probably the the out of the whole thing, the, um, most important part of this is the, the, the legal right. Of the bacon parcel, uh, to use Kerry Lynn Lane. What, what's your thoughts on that?
When I looked at the documentation that was provided by Ms. Bacon. The easement, the easement was created when the entirety of lots five, six, seven and eight was owned by the same owner. His property was in lots. I'm going to be backwards here, maybe lots five and six, I believe is the property that he kept. He allowed access on Kerry Lynn Lane for those other lots that he sold off between where his house was and where. Vista Drive was, so they would have the ability to use that road to access the properties that he was selling. I believe that because that initial estate was created by that dominant lot. Holder when it was all contiguous property, that the fact that the Bacons. Are asking to use that road as part of that what was once contiguous property is not. Removed by the fact that the easement was to grant lots seven and eight the right to use it. Because it was originally the alone owner of lots five, six, seven and eight that gave that right to the owners in lots seven and eight.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Thanks for, um, that opinion. Um, let's see here, uh, public comment. Um. Uh, Ms. Fulton, I see your hand is up. Uh, we'll go ahead and give you the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to, uh, I I think that the, uh. The configuration of the property has been, uh, misstated. If you look at the maps. In exhibit seven, the fourth map, you will see clearly. That the Bacon property overlaps into seven. And it is not just five and six. It includes a portion of seven. And that was done with the intent of maintaining legal access and legal easement. Down Kerry Lynn Lane so that 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 the original owner, H O McConnell. And his two daughters would have access and a ability to build and utilize. The larger portion that they retained. The, the Bacon property is the dominant estate. The Kerry Lynn Lane residents are the servient states. Under the easement law. So, uh, I think it needs that, the record needs to reflect that the Bacon's property overlaps into seven. Which is where that contiguous. Uh, point of access occurs and provides access to lots five and six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. Uh, Mr. Edwards, I see your hands up and and since I gave Ms. Fulton a. Uh, a rebuttal, I'll do the same for you. Let's go ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify something that the, uh, the map is. Is a little bit, um, misconceiving because the portion that's in lot seven. Is not owned by Carol Bacon. It's owned by a different Bacon. And that's not the portion of the property that's being subdivided. The portion of the property being subdivided is only in governmental lots five and six. Um, and, you know, the dominant estate here is the owners in lots seven and eight. Um, and they're also the servant because the easement was reserved, granted to each of them across that property for their benefit. Never granted by anybody, um, to go across seven and eight, get to five and six, period. And it was never reserved for that, um, period. There's no documentation of that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Um. Let's see, um. I'm going to go ahead. I see that, uh, we've got a few hands up, but, um, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, since we don't have anybody else. That's wishing to comment on this, um, I'm going to go ahead and close it to public comment. Um, at this point, um, discussion, uh, within the, uh, uh. Planning Commission. And Mr. Hinckley, I see your hand is up, so go right ahead.
Yeah, it's pretty tough. I I guess we're being asked to. To, uh, accept the arguments of one lawyer versus another, which is something the judge usually does. But but let me extract one thread from this that Mr. Edwards brought up. That was the same question I had and it may be it's a question more for. For Mr. Gurch than anyone else. And I was picturing the same scene that he was. If if we had somebody come in looking for subdivision of a piece of ground. The previous, the existing access to which was some two-track wandering off across the prairie and up and down through the ditches. Wouldn't we reject that? And so, what, what's the minimum standard, Mr. Gurch, that we would require for an existing road? None? Surely there's some point at which we would say, no, that isn't. Isn't sufficient access. What, what, can you help us there?
Sure. Um, so, I was looking through our regulations and it basically says that. Primary roads that connect a subdivision to a, um. Public road need to be constructed or proved to the same standards as the road. Um, within this, this subdivision. So this is kind of an interesting deal because, um. Well, one, there's really not a road in the subdivision except for the cul-de-sac. I guess the cul-de-sac is a road. But the standard would be sixteen foot, um, road. So, I'm not sure what Kerry Lynn Lane is across. Um, but if it's not sixteen feet across, then yeah, maybe there, it should be, um. You know, improved to that. The, the, the other difficulty with this situation and is that. This is across other people's land, right? I mean, it's an easement. It's not a dedicated road for road purposes. It's a, it's an easement that crosses. These folks' land. Um, and so I, I am. I mean, I, I, I've heard what Mitch has said and, um, you know, Mr. Hinckley, your, your comments and concerns. Um, so, I mean, and maybe this is something we need to to discuss a little bit further. Uh, maybe get some, I mean, if Jennifer wants to clarify this as well. I mean, we have in the past required some additional upgrades to roads that connect to. Um, to public roads, which, um, Mr. Edwards has has pointed out. But there's also been situations where we, we haven't required that and there are actually. Subdivisions we've done that that basically follow a two-track and then. Do exactly that, that, that have been approved. So, um, I think we need to figure out what, what we believe here and what is our standard. And and move forward with that. Um, so not to, to muddy the water, but. Um, I think those are valid points that maybe we need to discuss here and kind of figure out before we move forward, so.
I think this water is muddy. It wasn't your fault.
And I will tell you, I have not looked, I did not look into the issue of whether. The road standard needed to change with, or if not the road standard, if we were going to require upgrades to the existing Kerry Lynn Lane. So if that's something that this commission would like us to look into, I'm happy to, but I am not. I don't have an answer for you in this minute.
And Mr. Chair, I'll just add to this. Um, we do have a variance process too. I mean. If the standard of the existing road is okay, then you could make grant a variance or request that a variance be granted for this. Uh, from this road because of its existing state, but, um, yeah, just wanted to add that as well.
Mr. Hinckley, any more, uh, questions for, uh? Mr. Gurch or any more discussion that you might have?
Um, when we get to a motion, I'll have, I'll have my, some discussion. All right, this first question.
Good. Uh, Ms. Hanning?
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, could I add something?
Yes.
And this is for you, Mr. Hinckley. Um. You're, you had a question earlier about the, um, family subdivision. I think you're probably looking at the documentation that's provided in there. It, it was showing you the history of how the parcel was created. So, I apologize for the confusion. I wasn't understanding what you were asking when you were asking those questions earlier. So, I wanted to take the, the time to address that before we moved on, so.
Or I thought I was just crazy and made that all up. I, I'd seen that in there somewhere, just trying to recreate that. Um, yeah, so, Mr. Chair, what, what's the appropriate place for, for discussion of how to dispose of this? So. Oh, I have comments there with you. Want to hear those now or later?
Well, let's, uh, let's give everybody an opportunity to speak and then, um, and then we'll, uh. I'll give an op- opportunity for a motion and then before, uh, we vote on that, we'll have further discussion. Uh, Mr. Spiegelberg, you, uh, had a comment?
Just one comment. It seems like the second point is the road width. And I think that's something that can be, uh, brought up to the county engineer through the county commissioners. I don't think that's even on our purview.
Ms. Hanning, do you have any comments or discussion that you'd like to bring up, any points you'd like to bring up or questions?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is a reasonably complicated problem. And I agree with Mr. Hinckley that trying to sort out two opposing attorneys is challenging. And I'm grateful for Ms. Curran's advice. It seems to me as though having the easement and the legal ability to cross the road or have a road cross these properties, that the main issue is bringing the road up to the proper standards. Unfortunately, it seems as though our ability to apply the comprehensive plan that the city of Laramie refers to in their letter is not available to us anymore based on the training that we had earlier this afternoon in our special meeting. So it, I feel like this project is probably ripe for approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any discussion questions, comments, points?
I don't have any before a motion.
Okay. And I don't think I do either. So at this point, we're looking for, we're gonna make a ruling on this. And so the options that we have are a motion to approve, a motion to deny, or a motion to table this application.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify approval to the Board of County Commissioners of this application along with the finding that the client has legal access to the property.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
So a second for Mr. Spiegelberg. We'll go ahead and have some discussion here. So we have a motion to approve with the condition of approval or sufficient evidence of the access.
We have found that there's.
That there's access. Okay. Mr. Hinckley, I'll start with you because you're a smart, intelligent guy.
I won't make any representation to that effect.
Right ahead. We want to hear from you.
As long as best I can. All right. I am uncomfortable with the motion and will vote against it. I would prefer that we table it. The two things I am uncomfortable with in proceeding at this point, one is the city's, the city's concerns. And then they've gone, they're lengthy, and maybe the rest of you have seen those before. I just feel like we are saying we don't care what you have to say, city, and that's not in keeping with the spirit of cooperation we're trying to engender here. So I at least would like to see what the county's response was. And it may well be that we could be convinced that the city's apparent reliance on comprehensive whose plans is inappropriate. But I would like to hear that in a in a more organized and articulate way than just saying, yeah, yeah, you've all read the city letter and don't worry about it. So I'd like to see that and have that discussion with perhaps the expectation that it will be resolved contrary to the city's interest. Secondly, this road issue, I'm convinced, I mean, I'm happy to endorse the council that we have hired and our highly trained and competent county attorney's office that the easement is what it is. And if Mr. Edwards and his clients don't like that, they can take it to court. But, but I'm also stuck on the standards point of view and Mr. Gertz's representation that we that we should perhaps take this opportunity to codify what level of access is required. That it is more than just a two-track off across a plowed field, while it may be somewhat less than the city is requiring for full annexation. So based on those two issues that I feel require additional information and perhaps legal digestion, I would prefer that we continue this discussion rather than simply sending it on up to the county commission with a an approval recommendation. So that's where I am. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. And I think very valid points. Mr. Spiegelberg, did you have anything in discussion? No, none for you. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I do. We've been through two hours of training today, and one of the things that we spent a great deal of time on was the fact that we cannot base a decision based on a comprehensive plan. And with that, I will, I'm ready to hear from anyone else. Thank you. Ms. Hanning?
I, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess I'm also struggling. I personally would like to see growth around the city, you know, be in compliance with with the way the city grows. Because it's gonna be a train wreck later on when things get annexed and people are gonna have to shell out a lot of money to bring things up to code at that time. And today's dollars cost less than future dollars. So I, but unfortunately, we did get extensive training about how major street plans are considered policy, how comprehensive plans are considered policy and don't have the force of law. And so the training, unfortunately, I wish it wasn't like that. I wish that our courts found differently and found that these plans were equivalent to the regulations and had the same course of law. But nonetheless, they apparently don't. And which, which I guess for me means unfortunately, I wouldn't, I would have to approve this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. And I guess my comment is you, to me, I feel like the access issue was proved. And I looked through these documents and, and maybe I'm wrong, but I guess that's not for me to decide. I guess the folks are against it and take it to court again. But I feel like the applicant has provided all the information that they need. I do agree with Mr. Gertz on the fact that we probably do need to look at road standards. And maybe just go through that and you know, certainly, we're probably gonna have this issue in the future. So it'd be good to set out a certain criteria. So that when somebody does go apply for an application, they're given the information that they you know, need to get before they make the decision to subdivide their land. And I think it's unfair to this Bacon that that if we turned around and we said, well, you know what, we'd like you to improve that road to a city standard road. And then on top of the city, I mean, I've been on this commission for over the nine years. Well, this is my ninth year, excuse me. And, you know, we get letters from the city and it's not that we won't work with the city. I, I think that we've, we've had a very open willingness to work with them. But the problem is, is we tend to get these letters and they just throw everything out there in the world why it should be denied instead of saying, hey, maybe if we work together, we could, we could figure something out. But to me, it just seems like all they want to do is deny, deny, deny. And if it's not their idea, then we should just deny it. And I feel like they feel, the city feels like their jurisdiction should just be Albany County, if you ask them. But there's a reason why we have two different jurisdictions. And I do think that it's very important that we work together. And I think that the letter that is gonna be given to the city or the city's gonna give to the Board of County Commissioners. And I know from the past and past subdivisions that we really don't have a lot to do with that. It's, it's the chairman of the, of the Board of County Commissioners that answers those questions. So that's kind of my two cents. And what we're gonna do at this point is we're gonna go ahead and call a vote. Mr. Spiegelberg?
I approve.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Oo.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. Motion carries. That'll go on to the Board of County Commissioners. With that long public application, I see that we have no current planning projects, but Mr. Hinckley's raised a little bit of a, wanted to visit a little bit about, I guess, how do I say this appropriately here? Development within the APOZ. Mr. Hinckley, the floor is yours and we'll go ahead and listen to, to maybe some topics or things that you'd like to bring up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my comments were not specific to the APOZ, but rather to the information that we have to move forward on our, on our decisions. So not to speak for or against the Stone Ridge, which we agreed is for another day. But for example, not having the letter that we are kind of saying should be sent to the city on the last one. In the packet we received for that Stone Ridge, I would like to have seen the Chapter 23 study that was done and the SSI that was done. So I guess my, I guess my pitch there was, was to the staff. We're gonna see this come back to us. Please consider the completeness of the packet and try to to meet the standard that Jennifer set for all of us of everybody should have all the information that anybody else has. So that's, that's basically what it, what it boils down to. And those were a couple of things that I found in my files. I'm not even sure who sent them to me, the SSI and the, the Chapter 23 report. So my comment was just that general one, Mr. Chair, that that the packets that inform our decisions as we go forward on these applications should be as complete as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Hinckley, I think you're, you're absolutely right on that. Because I don't believe in my packet that I got for then again, I'm gonna bring it up just for, for acknowledgement of it is the SSI unless I missed it. But absolutely, I'd agree 100% that those documents should be given to us. And they are required by the applicant. So more information we have, better we can make decisions. So a great point, Mr. Hinckley. Yes.
I apologize. Some of, there's just a lot of paper and I tried to avoid printing all of it, but I would be happy to do that if that's important to you guys. In the past, typically I've just provided the, the letter that's given to us by Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality because they're, they're actually the reviewing agency for their report. And so I've just provided that. But, you know, if you guys would like that, I would, I'll go ahead and make sure I get that. It's just gonna make the packets much larger and much more expensive to send to you, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I think and maybe you don't have to send that to us. Maybe make us know that it's available and and, you know, I mean, it's not like it's difficult to run by your office and pick one up, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think in light of that, too, if, if John would want one hard copy, fine. But I think the rest of us are probably pretty comfortable with electronic. So I, I don't see the need to print the entire thing off for everybody.
Yeah, I guess, you know, also thinking of costs and things like that on the county. But yeah, I know for sure, Mr. Kennedy and myself, and I would assume that Mr. Hinckley and Ms. Hanning are electronically savvy. And I usually review all my packets online anyways. But but yeah, as long as we, if it's not too much to ask to have that information. But good point, Mr. Hinckley.
I just, just as an advice to my comrades here, there is on the David's website, current planning projects where a more complete set of documents are housed. Is that correct, David? So
Yeah, I try to put everything online that I, that I get. For the most part, I may forget something, but, but yeah, I try to keep everything on there.
Okay. And that's available to us long before it comes to our packet. I think that's another thing that's been discussed is certainly, I'm certainly not up to the task of fully digesting everything in the whatever, four days, five days between the packets' arrival and our decision. So I would encourage, or at least let everybody know, if they need a little more time, as I do, they can look at David's website and then subtly concur with Commissioner Kennedy that don't, don't burn any paper on my account. I'm perfectly happy to proceed electronically. And that's one of the benefits of the electronic age to slightly mitigate all of its, all of its issues. Give it to us in PDF and I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. With that being said, is there anything else that needs to be added to that comment, Mr. Spiegelberg? Mr. Kennedy?
None, thank you.
None from either of you. Ms. Hanning?
No, thank you.
All right. So at this point, we'll move on to other items and announcements. On there is next meeting, August 11th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. And I'll, oh, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah. So just for the, the, for those that showed up late to the meeting, we did postpone the Stone Ridge Estate subdivision application till the next meeting. They actually, well, we didn't really postpone it, but the the applicant pulled that from the meeting agenda. So I just know there was, there's someone on here that was interested in that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gertz.
That was for you, Tom.
Final point? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hinckley.
Yeah. In respect to regular meetings, what's the thinking of the staff and board on in-person meetings? Where are we on the progression? I hope out of the pandemic. Any thoughts on that?
From the staff perspective, I mean, the county commissioners have been meeting in person for the most part. So really, it's up to you guys. We're, we're good to go whenever, so.
Mr. Hinckley, to answer your question, you know, at this, I think at this time, I think that it would be certainly nice, and I certainly do miss being down at the courthouse and having our meetings, but I also think that we're not through this yet. And so for the time being, I think Zoom would be appropriate. We, I mean, I know for a fact, we got one gentleman on our commission. It's a little bit up there in age. And then also myself being somebody that I'm a type one diabetic. And so also to, you know, just to be precautionary. And I think that there will be a day that we will. But I would prefer to keep it this way for the time being until we have a better, a better handle on all this. And so that's just my, my, my two cents, but if that's okay with everybody. And a good question, Mr. Hinckley, because I think that's on everybody's mind is getting back together, which would be nice. With that being said, our, our next meeting's August 11th at 4:00 PM. I, I think we'll do that on Zoom again. And then at this point, I'll open it up for any citizen comment, anything that's not agenda-related. We're here to listen to. And not seeing any hands up, I guess we'll go ahead and close that. And I guess we're gonna have an adjournment. So there being no further business to conduct, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Kennedy.
First from Kennedy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Spiegelberg. We'll go ahead and take roll. Mr. Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. Now, thank you guys for your meeting day. Great discussion. And, and I know it was tough, but you know, I guess that's why we're here to make tough decisions sometimes. But I know it's hard on all of us, but appreciate all of your questions and participation. And David and Joe, thank you for all your work. And Ms. Curran, thank you for all your work today, too. Have a nice week and take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.